We decided to show up.
Yeah.
I think everybody's mics are turned on right now. Which is exciting. Y'all want to turn your mics on?
On or off?
I think they're all. Are everybody ready? Doctor Getchere, you on?
Yes, I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir. We got you. All right, do I have a motion to return to open session?
Second.
Ms. Franklin and Ms. Parton. Any discussion? Ms. Osborne, please call the roll.
Ms. Bond.
Yes.
Ms. Franklin.
Yes.
Doctor Getchere.
Yes.
Ms. Parton.
Yes.
Ms. Purcell.
Yes.
Doctor Roundtree.
Yes.
Mr. Hudson.
Yes.
Seven in favor.
Motion carries. Do I have a motion to certify a closed session that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which the certification applies, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered?
So moved.
Dr. Roundtree and Ms. Franklin. Any discussion? Ms. Osborne, please call the roll.
Ms. Bond.
Yes.
Ms. Franklin.
Yes.
Doctor Getchere.
Yes.
Ms. Franklin.
Yes.
Purcell.
Yes.
Doctor Roundtree.
Yes.
Mr. Hudson.
Yes.
Seven in favor.
Motion carries. All right, everybody, thanks for joining us tonight. Sorry we're getting started a little bit late. We had a little bit to discuss before we got going. Clearly, y'all are all having a very exciting summer if you want to spend your Tuesday night with us here, but it's, yeah, it was super awesome to see you all, a packed house tonight. So we are going to go ahead and get started on our agenda. First up, Mr. Mark Hudson, our director of CTE and, Mark, Mark husband, but we're not related. Director of CTE and virtual learning will begin our recognition of the spring 2024 VHSL state champions.
Not the first time that somebody has thought my last name was Hudson. Thank you all for the opportunity to recognize our spring 2024 VHSL athletic state champions. Three high schools are represented here tonight. To help us introduce our state champion teams and individuals, from Auburn High School, we have athletic director Paul Dominey. From Blacksburg High School, we have the new athletic director Nikki Sellers. And from Christiansburg High School principal, Mr. Shane Gwynn.
First, I'd like to say it's good to be back here again, and I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to recognize the outstanding athletes throughout MCPS this evening. Auburn won one individual and one team state championship this spring, along with our sixth consecutive all sports championship, now called the National Guard Cup, the longest current streak in the VHSL. I'd like to introduce first our individual state champion Talen Mauer. Talen, come on up with your coach Josh Nestor. Talen won the pole vault championship in class one this year as a junior by the slimmest of margins. At 12 feet, he made his first attempt while his primary rival and arch nemesis missed. That miss turned out to be the tiebreaker when they both went out at 12.6. Talen is an outstanding athlete who is also a stotter on our, on our baseball team which reached the state semifinals, doing both track and baseball at that level this spring, made for a very busy season for Talen. Next, I'd like to introduce our girls soccer team. The girls and the coach, go ahead and stand up. You can just extend the line right out this way. That's fine. We felt pretty good about our season going into the year. These girls had lost in four overtimes in the state championship game in 2023, and they had eight starters from that team returning along with a fantastic incoming group of freshmen. The 12-4 regular season included losses only to the class two state champion and to a very local class three school that we will not name at this time. Primed for the playoffs from their performance in the regular season, this team outscored their opponents in the playoffs 42-3 in six playoff games and never scored less than six goals in a game during their playoff run. This is our girls soccer program's second state championship and the first since 2019. I'd like to introduce the players to you. Josie A.G. Helms. Logan Monday. Brooklyn Mikovic. Anna Silva Juarez. Stacy Lewis. Lucy George. Gillian Tucker. Casey Rosenbaum. State Player of the Year Katie Light. Henry Smith. Miley Thomas. Ella Handy. Grace Harris. Marina King. Haley Light. Beverly Warner. Nora Garland. Abigail Morabito. Allison Funk. Kristen Pack. Leah Coons. Jenny Fuchko. Kennedy Marshall. Rowan Price. And our head coach Adam Ritchie.
Good evening. My name is Nikki Sellers. I'm the new athletic director at Blacksburg High School. We had a very, very successful spring season and one state championship with our girls' track team. I don't think it gets any closer than winning by a half of a point. So at this time, I'm actually going to let Stephen Howard, our head coach, explain to you how that meet went and the excitement that it came down to the very final event.
All right, this is just a fraction of our, of our girls' track team. We have about 60 women on the, on the women's track team at Blacksburg High School, and it really would not be possible without our team, without everybody on our team. But I want to recognize the people who are here. Starting on this end, we've got Coach Steve Schmidt, Coach Sarak, we've got Stacy Ballou. We've got Josie Marshall, Mira Bowman, Cameron Lee, Maryam Mohammed, Leila Boyle, Bella Garza, Jayla Bandi, Lena Tyhurst, Eliza Conaway, and we've got Timoy Douglas. So those are our ladies here tonight, and all of them were integral for our state championship. I do want to highlight Leila Boyle here, who was state champion in the pole vault. Is the state champ in the pole vault. She also is tied for our school record with 11 feet in the pole vault, which is an awesome night when she got that. So, yeah, I just want to tell you a little bit about our, our state meet. I'll try to be brief, but first, I just want to thank the board for, for having us, for having all the teams out and celebrating the accomplishments. I know our team has worked hard, and I know all these other teams that are here have worked incredibly hard. It is no easy feat to win a state championship, and I think that it's really amazing that we celebrate it the way we do. So thank you guys for having us here. I could not be more proud of our women's crew for what they've accomplished this past season. At the end of our indoor track season, we knew that it was going to be fierce competition between us and Athley High School for the indoor state title. This is back in the winter. Unfortunately, nearly everything went wrong for our team and everything went right for Athley. In any sport, this is, it can happen to anybody, but we, we settled for an admirable second place finish at the indoor state meet, but it definitely deeply motivated the girls on this team. They wanted better than second. So, but we knew we had to go up against Athley again in outdoor track, and they would be our fiercest competition. So we went to work with our end goal in mind. Everybody in the team had the goal in mind that we wanted to win a state title. We scaled countless barriers to get to states, and when we did, it was nothing short of a Disney-esque display of teamwork. I, I seriously think that a movie could be made on our season. It was, it was incredible. When we got to the state meet, every girl performed at a high standard, and the most important and probably impressive display was the teamsmanship that every girl played. Every girl was cheering on their teammates, and they were doing everything they could, they could to help each other prepare for their events. Everyone was involved. A couple of things that I wanted to highlight that are, you know, notable for the team accomplishments, we had Ally McDonald, she's not here tonight. She was seeded 16th in the mile, and in order to get all state, which is scoring points for your team, you have to get top eight. She was seeded 16th, and she, she told me, she said, "I'm not going to get 16th, I'm going to score points for our team because that's what we need." She finished sixth, which was a huge, huge thing, and she did it out of the slow section, which is even more difficult. I also want to highlight Mira Bowman in the red right here. She, we talked before the, her individual event, the 400 meters, and I said, "Mira, this is going to be a really, really close meet with the team points. I really think the best thing that we could do for the team is hold you out of your individual event so that you're fresher for the relay at the end of the meet." And she said, "If that's what you think is best for the team, I am all for it." And for her to make that sacrifice for her team, when you could have, you know, kind of the individual notoriety to, to lay that down and say, "I want to do what's best for my team," was a true sacrifice for her, and it ended up paying off, which I'll talk about in a sec. Five school records were broken during the state meet. It's great to break one school record in a season, let alone five school records in a single meet. So Bella Garza got the school record in the triple jump. Mia Littlejohn got the school record in the 100-meter hurdles. She also got the school record in the 300-meter hurdles, and she held it for about five minutes before her teammate then went to break the 300-meter hurdles and won the 300-meter hurdles. Her name is Kiana Grubb, she can't be here tonight, but she won the 300-meter hurdles and is a state champion, and she won by three thousandths of a second, three one thousandths of a second. So it took, it took a long time for her name to pop up on the board because they had to look at the picture so many times to make sure that it was her that won. And then the last school record that we had was the four-by-four 100-meter relay with Testikins, Ally McDonald, Cameron Lee, and Mira Bowman, who we had pulled out of the 400 meters earlier. So with one event to go in the meet, we were down five and a half points. We had to get third place in the four-by-four relay in order to secure first place as a team. A point the meet announcer made abundantly clear, probably 20 to 30 times to the crowd, and also making our girls very nervous. But even though they were nervous, they, they knew they had a job to get done, and they did it flawlessly. They took third place in the four-by-four to set a school record. Cameron Lee anchored with one of the fastest 400 times that's ever been run at Blacksburg High School, and they won by half a point over our rivals, who we'd been beat by, by 30 points the previous season. Their teamwork was truly a thing of beauty. It is, it takes a lot to manage, you know, 17 different events going on at the same time, or, you know, at different times. And what I love about track and field, and what I love especially about this group, and it will be the most memorable group of all time, is how much they encouraged each other in all those different events. It wasn't just sprinters cheering on sprinters, or distance cheering on distance. Everybody was engaged with one another, and it was a true team effort, and I could not be more proud. I'm more proud of that aspect than our, our finish on the podium. I'm just proud of these ladies so much because they have such good hearts and they're just amazing. So on behalf of, of the girls, I think I can speak for all of us when I just say thank you to our coaches and thank you to our parents. We have just the best community that supports us. So thank you guys for everything that you've done for us. Thank you so much.
Dr. Bragan, members of the board. Good to see you all tonight. Thank you for having us. Congratulations to all the individuals and teams tonight that have their individual state titles and team state championships. I want to take an opportunity just to highlight our kind of cherry on top for our spring sports season this evening. We had a tremendous spring. We were blessed to perform at a high level, and we had a lot of teams make the, the tournament, get in the state tournament. We performed well, but to highlight that was our girls' softball team that brought home the first ever state title in girls' softball for Christiansburg High School in the class three level. There's another individual that's going to speak and give you a lot more details than I probably can, and that is the class three state coach of the year, Sean Gaynor. I'm going to invite him up to speak on our team's behalf and give you some highlights from their extraordinary season. Thank you again. Ladies, come on up as well.
All right. First, thank you, thank you all for having us and honoring us here today. I just thank the good Lord for blessing me with this opportunity to, to be able to coach this, this team, this family unit that you see before you. I think you guys honoring us today and these things that they've accomplished is something that really I don't think they understand right now. They're going to appreciate it a whole lot more later on in life, and I thank you guys for this opportunity. So thank you guys from the bottom of my heart to the CHS administration for believing in me and giving me a chance, afforded me the opportunity such as this is just an awesome gift I've waited for, for a long time, and I just can't express how thankful I am for you guys for believing in me. Standing before you today, you see a group of athletes and coaches who've worked very hard this year and putting countless hours into reaching our goals. The coaches have given and given and given again to this family, and the athletes have doubled their practices from previous seasons, something they had really to get used to from day one, because I know these ladies, when we first started, they were grabbing their bags, ready to go about halfway through practice. Today, you guys have a team before you who won the district season for the very first time in program history. They won the district tournament. They made it to the second round of regions for the very first time in program history, won the region tournament, made it to states for the very first time in program history, and won the state championship game. If there was a game and a trophy to be won this years, this year, these girls did it. It was a clean sweep. We went undefeated on the road. We have several members here before you that are district first team and second team, as well as honorable mention. We have several members who are region first team and second team, and we also have several members of the state first team, as well as the state player of the year. We have several members of the All Timesland team standing here before you today. We have a player who received the honors of district player of the year, region player of the year, state player of the year, and the All Timesland player of the year, Caden Camper. We have two players who will be moving on to play in college. One of them's not here with us today. We have, as you can see, we have several members who could not make it today. This team now holds the best record ever for program history of 24 and 3. These girls broke the Virginia season home run record for all classes with 41 home runs on the season. These girls were ranked in the district, number one in our district, ranked number one in RONOC rankings, ranked number one in the region, ranked number four in the state for all classes, and ranked number one in the state for class three. We outscored our opponents in district tournament play 10 to 0, in region tournament play 25 to 1, and in state tournament play 12 to 4. Early in the year, these girls were learning how to face and fight opposition when troubles arose. They learned, and about three quarters of the way through began to play their best ball, which became our theme, "Play Your Best Ball." I told them to keep playing their best ball and we'd be just fine. I couldn't be more proud of each and every one of these young ladies here believing in the process and their contributions to our successful season. Each and every one of the ladies you see before you today contributed to our success this season. We couldn't do it without a single one of them. Dealing with opposition early in the season was key as opposition reared its ugly head once again in the end for a final bout. The last game of the season became our final exam, and they aced it, winning the match over Turner Ashby in extra innings, 6 to 3, to become the first ever Christiansburg High School state championship softball team, something that this family will never, ever forget. Way to go, Big Blue. I'll name, I'll name off the, the young ladies you guys have before you today. You guys can raise your hand, nod, wink, whatever you want to do. We do have a couple that are not here. Kirsten Lowe, Caden Camper, Addison Razor, Reagan Smith, Michaela Hughes, Tylee Dillard, Sophia Russell, Brooklyn Minary, Katie Womack, Mayberry Keaster, Aubrey Davis, Addison Linkus, Abby Neal, and Piper Chamless. Assistant coach is Coach Eric Gaynor, that you see before you right here. And we also had our, our two coaches, Coach Coop and Coach G, who could not make it this evening neither.
Great, thank you all for coming out tonight. This is by far my favorite tradition, I guess, we've got here on the board. Super awesome bringing everybody out. Since we're not taking a break tonight to kind of say hi to folks, any board members have any comments they want to add before everybody leaves here?
Congrats to everybody.
Congratulations.
Give them a minute to clear out here. Oh, yeah, right. All right, great. We'll go ahead and move on to our public address portion of our meeting. Our next agenda item is public address. We welcome the opportunity to hear from students, parents, employees, and community members about education matters in this community. As a reminder, the board sets aside 30 minutes to start our public address. We have the option to extend in 30-minute increments, which Ms. Osborne will remind us of. If there are additional speakers after 90 minutes, the board will continue with their business meeting and hold one additional 30-minute session at the end of the business meeting. Clock continues through applause and disruptions. The more disruptions there are, the fewer speakers who get to address the board. I will call each speaker up by name in the order that they signed up. Each speaker will have three minutes to address the board. The board does not respond to speakers during public address. The screens will show when the speaker has 30 seconds remaining and when their time is up.
May a document created by our community group members, a proposal to how to achieve educational equity, including reducing disproportionality in student outcomes based on race or disability. You do have a copy of that. Just a very quick summary. Number one, set clear expectations, ongoing professional development experiences, and accountability measures to reduce implicit bias in teacher, administrator, and division leadership. Number two, create a set of equity indicators for the division that can highlight disparities and point toward possible improvements. Number three, listen, I mean truly listen, to student and parent voices regarding conditions in their schools that can contribute to challenging behaviors and academic barriers. And four, continue to work with the Office of Equity and Diversity to assist schools with providing all students equitable access to resources and opportunities. Since this document was sent, I've had some personal experiences that I'd like to close with. Number one, hearing of a black teacher resigning, where I read about some alarming experiences in her school that should have never happened. Number two, meeting with Christiansburg Institute leadership and then talking to two of the student interns, where they shared some experiences. When I asked if they had teacher allies, I heard, yes, a few, but what I also interpreted was many teachers really just don't know what to do or how to respond when inappropriate things are said or done in their school. I will say, however, that I did see hope in their eyes of these young people. Let's not disappoint them. Number three, I attended a historic Smithfield program this last weekend. I wasn't sure I wanted to go, but I'm glad I did. I now understand better that we have a moral obligation to partner with local resources such as Christiansburg Institute and perhaps Smithfield, to provide students and staffs with a deeper understanding of history that's in our back door. And four, I heard a sermon on Sunday where I heard, when there is an injustice for one, it is the responsibility of us all. I wish you each a new, I wish each of you and our new and returning students and educators a successful year. It's always very exciting. What I hope is they are more positive experiences and one where we can learn from the past and improve in the future. Thank you, and I look forward to seeing some of you at the ACE Race on Saturday.[754.00][754.00](APPLAUSE)
Thank you, Ms. Stallings. Next up is Nicholas Fisher, followed by Chris Sanchez.
Dr. Bragan and board members, thank you for the opportunity to talk with you this evening. I'm speaking in reference to the article that was in the Roanoke Times about the use of the quote "N-word," and I want to share several observations. One, as public school educators, my wife Karen and I have been working on issues of racism, disproportionate suspensions and expulsions of minority students, and closing achievement gaps in public schools since 1968. Research on professional development shows that one time professional development has very little impact on changing adult behavior, and that's a lot of what we're going to need to be about. Number two, reducing disproportionate suspensions and expulsions of African-American and special needs students will require training of all staff, not just teachers, over a three- to five-year period. Number three, punishment alone, such as suspensions or expulsions, does not change children's, and for that matter, suspensions alone do not change adult behavior. A multi-step process can help, and I'm speaking to this having worked on it in several different school districts. One is you can require the user of racial slurs to meet with and inform counselor to discuss in depth the incident that led to the use of the slur and how the user learned to use the word. Number two, you can have the counselor discuss what the user intended by using the word and how to use other words to express feelings like anger. Number three, when and if both parties are willing, set up a session of a supervised conversation between the user of the racial slur and the victim, but this really requires permission on both parties, and it cannot be forced. Next, require community service of the person who uses racial slurs, particularly in environments that they may not be used to spending time in. Next, follow-up conversations to check on whether there have been changes in behavior on the part of that student. Next, require the user of the racial slur to research how racial slurs came to be used and what their impact is on people. The final recommendation I want to share with you is that I understand that there is an advisory board to the Equity Office in the school district. I want to, though, recommend that this board consider that the Equity Office become multi-ethnic. Currently, I think the perception gets to be that it's the responsibility of African-American students and parents, quote, "to solve the issues that are facing the districts." When there's broader representation, it becomes more folks' responsibilities. There's a need to be inclusive of African-Americans, Hispanics, whites...
Thank you, Mr. Fisher. Your time's up. I'm sorry.
Okay. Sorry, and you have my statement.
Great, thank you, sir.[957.32][957.32](APPLAUSE) Next up is Chris Sanchez, followed by Raven Smith.
How are you all doing tonight? Very good. My name is Chris Sanchez. I actually live right down the street here, off Evans Street. I'm a resident of Christiansburg, and I'm here to share a little bit about what I've been seeing, serving as the Executive Director of the Christiansburg Institute. For those of you who don't know, I'll be very brief. Christiansburg Institute was the first secondary school, the first high school, in the region of southwest Virginia to educate formerly enslaved people, and its historic campus, right behind Dairy Queen, right here in town, was prior a plantation with at least up to 12 enslaved individuals who were held in bondage but did live on that land. This is the same site that the Christiansburg High School today rests on. Pending that, and then maybe rewinding, three years ago, our organization partnered with the African-American history class at the high school, and we offered internships to students who wanted to learn more about local black history, our shared history in Montgomery County. We began to see a few things here. One, not many students know about this tremendous local, state, and national history that we get to share in, in southwest Virginia. The second thing I began to notice very quickly, and that has continued three years later, which brings me here this evening, is the problem with the use of the "N-word" in the school, and I'm mindful that hate speech is more than one word, right? But we're specifically talking about the "N-word" and the pervasive use of that word in the classroom, in the hallways, and I think what we would like to see are some tangible steps, some strategies, that can bring accountability to the increased use of the word, and we think that's really important for the school board to demonstrate and continue to demonstrate its leadership and model in that direction. But also, Christiansburg Institute, we really believe that providing access to more education about African-American history and culture is extremely important. Looking at my time. And so, perhaps there is a lack of knowledge in the under-teaching of African-American history, and I don't think that's unique to Montgomery County, right? So what we want to do is provide increased access to learning opportunities for student interns, as well as teacher training, cultural competency training, racial literacy training, which I think would be a tremendous benefit for the student, the teacher, and the parents. We have a museum and a learning center. We are open throughout the week, and I would love to extend an invitation for you all to come to our table and get to know more of who we are and what we can do to provide and work together to preserve this shared story and protect our students in the school system. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sanchez.[1164.58][1164.58](APPLAUSE) Next up is Raven Smith, followed by Betty Thomas.
Good evening. My name is Raven Smith, and I am a current senior at Christiansburg High School and a student intern at the Christiansburg Institute. I am here this evening to share my experience that I have had while attending the schools in MCPS, and all across the country, and ways for everyone to learn and grow. One of the ways we can help future students is focusing on accountability, education, cultural resources, and how it can affect the mental health of African-American students and others of different races and ethnicities. People learn that they are different from a young age, but for African-Americans, we are taught it from a much younger age. When I was in elementary school during a presidential election year, a student that I was talking to personally was telling me about the election and told me that when one of the electors got elected, that me and my family were going to go back to the fields. Even now, just walking in the halls, if you aren't paying enough attention to conversations, you can miss how often the "N-word" is said. This is not the only experience that I have had. People in my family and other families have to deal with this issue. When I was younger, I wondered why someone would wish that on anyone, especially after knowing what had happened in those fields, and even now I wonder why people would use the "N-word." After working on my internship and researching different materials, I know that it is now ignorance. This ignorance is taught by not only parents, but also teachers in the system. I believe that a way to fix this issue is to teach the actual and full history of African-Americans. To help start this process, I have three asks. One, what is MCPS currently doing and what plans are happening to address this situation? Two, I would like to partner CI as an educational and cultural resource and community partner for increased access to African-American history, learning opportunities, and professional development. Three, I would also like to invite you all to the upcoming library event that we have for the usage of the "N-word." And I'm also here to advocate for increased access to educational resources, cultural training, and teacher professional development focusing on African-American history and culture within MCPS. By partnering with Christiansburg Institute, we can enrich our curriculum with comprehensive and authentic historical perspectives and provide our teachers with unique cultural training opportunities. Two, empower our students with a deeper understanding of African-American heritage. And three, this collaboration will not only enhance educational outcomes, but also foster a more inclusive and culturally aware school community. Thank you.[1317.71][1317.71](APPLAUSE)
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Next up is Betty Thomas, followed by Theron Smith.
Good evening. My name is Betty Thomas, and I live in Christiansburg. I would like to say thank you. The past three years of school have been amazing. I have received support from countless people, y'all included. My teachers and classmates have been using my pronouns in class, and they have been so supportive for me as a queer student. I have not had any big problems in about two years. However, the same cannot be said for some of my friends. Ever since I came out six years ago, my family has been told that it would be safer for us to move to Blacksburg, that it would be better for us to move to Blacksburg. They often use arguments like, "It has a better queer community." "The people there are just more accepting." "They'll have more students like Zer." "The staff and kids are better." And I believed that. I believed that for a long time, until this year. Over the past couple of months, lots of people, most of them my friends, have come up to me and talked about their experiences at BMS. They are being harassed in the halls, bullied by students because they're queer. They are being called "faggots" by their peers. There are people who have told me that some kids took it from using words to hurting them. They are being barked at and tripped when they move from class to class. They are being so put down that they don't want to come to school anymore. They don't want to get out of bed in the morning. They are terrified of what might happen to them at a space they are told is safe. I want you to think of the little kids, the ones in fifth grade, fourth, third, second, first, all the ones who will eventually be going to this school. I don't want them, and I hope you don't want them, to have to go through what the current students are dealing with. Things in Blacksburg have gone out of hand, and it's time for things to change. Thank you.[1448.01][1448.01](APPLAUSE)
Thank you, Betty. Next up is Theron Smith, followed by Sarah Walden.
Good evening. My name is Sarah Smith Jr. I am a student at Christiansburg Institute, and I am a junior at Christiansburg High School. I'm here today because I am livid about the lack of understanding and education at my school regarding the inappropriate use of hate speech, specifically the "N-word." I am very distressed by the fact that this racial slur, which undermines and dehumanizes black individuals, continues to be used by student peers, despite my best efforts to educate my student community about the harmful impact it has on the black community. When I was in sixth grade, me and one of my friends were called the "N-word" by a group of students at the school. This is not the first time someone called me the "N-word." However, it was one of the more impactful times for me in my life, because he had said it to try to dehumanize and dehumiliate, to humiliate me. To his friends, after all they called me, after all they called me that, all I could feel was anger, but I couldn't do anything because I knew I would get in trouble and he wouldn't. When I told the teacher, they said they would talk to the student. Unfortunately, nothing happened to discipline those students. I am requesting the implementation of a new support system to help students in navigating racial trauma, developing racial literacy skills, and to help them express their feelings, I would like teachers to receive training to better assist students of color with racial challenges. Thank you for your time.[1543.17][1543.17](APPLAUSE)
Thank you, Ms. Smith. I might just want to clarify, sorry, there was Theron Smith and Theron Smith Jr. signed up. Was that, that was both of you? Yeah, okay. Did you want to speak too?[1557.15][1557.15](LAUGHTER) And then we'll get to Sarah Walden.
Good evening. Thank you for giving us this opportunity to speak with you about this issue. This is an issue that I have been speaking about for years. It is always described as a complex issue, but in actuality it is not. This word was created specifically to dehumanize an entire group of people. Historically, the easiest way to remove empathy for people is to use language that makes them seem less than human. Case in point, the Nazis referred to Jews as insects. When you have a derogatory name for someone that strips them of their humanity, there is no way to reclaim the power in that name. One, you cannot reclaim anything you never claimed to begin with, and two, you cannot take the power out of something that left millions of our ancestors powerless, vulnerable, susceptible to false imprisonment, rape, torture, and murder. Unfortunately, one of the first things done to slaves when they were brought to this country was to strip them of their language. In doing so, it isolated them even further and made rebellions almost impossible to organize. So when slaves that worked in the house heard the word as it related to field workers, they used it, and vice versa. At one point, black people were told that we changed the pronunciation to change the meaning, but this was all done pretty much as a psyop by the powers that be to keep black people downtrodden, much in the same vein as COINTELPRO. The government knew that a cohesive and organized black population would be a very dangerous thing. Today, kids still use this word, black kids unknowingly disrespecting themselves and their ancestors, and white kids in an attempt to be cool or edgy, all under the umbrella of misinformation or pure ignorance. If the truth about this word were taught to our youth the way that the slurs of other ethnic groups, then that word would have died out, and contrary to popular belief, there is absolutely no equivalent word for other groups. There needs to be a complete and total ban for that word. Yes, but there also needs to be education to the children on why the word is being banned. In a time where kids get all of their information from social media, soundbites, and parents are unfortunately all too happy to let them, without instruction, it is imperative that the schools teach these kids, especially those of color, these lessons. Hip-hop philosopher KRS-One said it best, "You cannot take that word and try and make it out to be one of camaraderie," because if you have kids running around saying, "I'm going to kill this N., I'm going to shoot this N.", then it sounds like they're justified with all the vitriol attached to that word. But if you hear someone say, "I'm going to kill my brother," or "I'm going to shoot my sister," it makes it sound so much worse. Thank you.[1723.51][1723.51](APPLAUSE)
Thank you, sir. Our next up is Sarah Walden, followed by Kimberly Williamson.
Good evening, board members, and Dr. Bragan. Thank you for the opportunity for me to speak to you today. My name is Sarah Walden, and I'm a special education teacher in Blacksburg. I want to begin by thanking you for implementing a stipend for sped teachers and certified related service personnel to compensate us for the time we spend in meetings, training, and planning outside of our contracted hours. Thank you for seeing us. I'm here today on behalf of my colleagues and my students. I love this school district.
Good evening, board members and Dr. Brogan. Thank you for the opportunity for me to speak to you today. My name is Sarah Walden and I'm a special education teacher in Blacksburg. I want to begin by thanking you for implementing a stipend for sped teachers and certified related service personnel to compensate us for the time we spend in meetings, training, and planning outside of our contracted hours. Thank you for seeing us. I'm here today on behalf of my colleagues and my students. I love this school district. I love my students. But like my students, sometimes the school district takes too much from me. Like a small child, it continues to ask and ask and ask without stopping to look at my face when it's stressed or my hands when they're full. It just continues to pile more and more. When I start dropping things, it screams, "Why did you do that?" My students don't often understand analogies or metaphors, but they do understand their own limits. When they're pushed too far, they scream, they hit, they bite, and they run. And that's what's happening today. I sent all of you an email on July 18th and I only received a response from Mr. Lynn Wood, Mrs. Purcell, and Dr. Brogan. Thank you for taking the time to consider and to respond. At the beginning of the 2022-23 school year, we started with two amazing paras in our school. As new students began to join their school families, so did the need for more adult support. Since then, we have five para positions and we've had eight different para professionals in and out of our building. One of them lasted a mere five days. Every one of them mentioned that they were not prepared for what the job exactly entails and they do not feel they're adequately compensated for it. As a teacher, I can't control the budget or the hiring process or the preparation program, so all I could do was get creative. While we're in between staff members, we relied heavily on substitutes. If you have the joy of loving someone with autism, you know how much they rely on consistency and familiarity. As you can surmise, much of the school year was very difficult for them. There were some days we were just trying to survive. This not only impacts us as sped staff and the students with disabilities, but also the rest of the school. We need our paras. Our students need their paras. The retention of our para professionals is directly intertwined with the success of our students with disabilities. If we truly want to be a district of inclusion, we need to support our people. From my conversations with current and former paras, I've leaned to necessary amendments to the current hiring process and you can find them detailed in the email I sent. First is an increase of pay. Two is to amend the language in the HR job description. We currently have three vacancies for our school alone and school is starting in 13 days. If you can increase the pay before then, it will bring more people through the door. And if you're transparent about what their job entails, they'll be more willing to stay. Thank you again for your time. Please consider this as you go about your meeting today.
Thank you, Ms. Walden. Next up is Kimberly Williamson, followed by Tess Larson.
Kimberly Williamson, Christiansburg, Virginia. Welcome back. I was going to speak about something else entirely tonight, but I wanted to say that I do agree with those who have been speaking about racial slurs. I think that whether it comes from outside of that community or any community to another community or within that community itself, it lowers, in people's minds, it lowers them to a victim status either from themselves or from the outside looking in, when they should be victors and victorious people in this world as everyone should be. And I just wanted to say I agree.
Thank you, Ms. Williamson. Next up is Tess Larson. Do we have Tess Larson? Okay. Then we'll move along to Jenny Nert, followed by Demia Smith.
Hi. Thank you so much for having us and making the space. I'm Jenny Nert. I'm the curator at Christiansburg Institute, Inc. And I have the immense pleasure of working with our region's rich Black history and culture through our museum, archives, and educational programming. It's an incredible history. It's one of joy, perseverance, and stories about how local African-Americans in our region demanded equal education for over a century. In studying this history, I'm used to reading records that reveal centuries of racial prejudice wielded by local African-Americans. It's a tragic part of our collective history. I used to believe that these racial slurs lived in the past. And I'm embarrassed to say that I was shocked when our internship program began and high school students came and started reporting their experiences. Interns have shared being called the N-word, being compared to animals and other slurs by high school, by their fellow high school students. And how can we expect our young people, especially young students of color, to learn in that environment? Clearly, they're doing well because they're such good speakers compared to me. So this is a frustrating problem without a singular solution. But I do believe that supporting student voices and fostering learning collaboration and open dialogue is essential to creating a safe and inclusive environment at MCPS. And it's my commitment to those values and my position that brings me here. I believe that usually this word's being used out of ignorance. Most are unaware of the long and hard fight African-Americans and other minority groups have had for their collective dignity and civil rights and the violence that it caused. The pervasive use of racial slurs in our school highlights a critical need to educate, providing both teachers and students with educational resources about African-American history. So Christiansburg Institute, Inc. is here with some MCPS students and teachers to offer our assistance as a museum and learning center. Through several national grants we have created and we are continuing to create new educational programming and lesson plans that are offered to our local educators and students. Through increased collaboration together, I believe we can accomplish creating a more educated, knowledgeable, and kinder student body and prepared teachers and support staff. So with that, I'll wrap it up. But I hope that you'll consider what these students have said because it was really powerful and brave of them. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Nert. All right, next up is Demia Smith, followed by Ashley Pelazo.
Good evening. My name is Demia Smith and I'm a Christiansburg High School alum from the class of 2019. And I'm a current staff member at Christiansburg Institute. I have spent twenty, all twenty-three of years of my life in this county and within this school system. Back in high school, I was fortunate enough to meet with a board member, Ms. Penny Franklin, to talk about what life was like as a minority student in our schools. And I remember particularly the discussion surrounding the persistent use of the N-word within our school system. It was a problem not only when I was a student, but it's disheartening to learn that within the five years that I have been out of this school system and an alum, that the persistent use is only getting worse. Ms. Franklin not just showed that as a school board member, she was just a model of what the position held. I believe that supporting student voices and fostering ongoing learning and collaboration is essential to creating a safe and inclusive environment in MCPS. It is my commitment to these values and the, my support of youth environment and education that brings me here tonight. The pervasive and inappropriate use of racial slurs, specifically the N-word, highlights a critical need to address educational gaps by improving access to resources that teach both students and teachers about African-American history and culture, the harm of racial trauma. Increased accountability and leadership from the MCPS board is a moral and ethical imperative. Importantly, it is also an educational opportunity to meaningfully address the pervasive use of the N-word in the school system. As an alum, MCPS working in Christiansburg, in partnership with Christiansburg Institute, a local museum and learning center that focuses on African-American history and culture in southwest Virginia, is a huge benefit and something I wish I would have had in all of this at school. Empowering our teachers and students with a deeper understanding of African-American history and culture will not only enhance educational outcomes, but also foster a more inclusive and culturally aware MCPS community for future generations. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Ms. Pelazo, if you'll hold on one second. Board members, Ms. Osborne has indicated that the thirty minutes has passed. Does anyone wish to make a motion to extend a public address by an additional thirty minutes?
So moved.
Ms. Purcell and Ms. Franklin, any discussion? Ms. Osborne, please call the roll.
Ms. Bond?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Dr. Getchery?
Yes.
Ms. Barton?
Yes.
Ms. Purcell?
Yes.
Dr. Roundtree?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Seven in favor.
Motion carries. All right, Ms. Ashley Pelazo, you're up now. And you're actually our last speaker, so.
Hey. Good evening. My name is Ashley Pelazo and I live in Christiansburg. I am the archivist at Christiansburg Institute, Inc. And I have had the great pleasure of working with the young students from Montgomery County Public Schools over the past two years. Seeing the wonder of learning happening right before my eyes has been a great accomplishment as we have worked with these students over the past couple of years. I, I hope the work that we are doing at CI, Inc. will inspire these students to continue to explore history and community throughout their lives and their careers. I believe that supporting student voices and fostering ongoing learning, collaboration, and open dialogue is essential to creating a safe and inclusive environment in the school system. It is my commitment to these values and my support of youth empowerment and education that brings me here tonight. Here are some examples of how I believe we can accomplish this goal together. MCPS working in partnership with our organization, Christiansburg Institute, as we are a local museum literally right down the road. If you haven't visited us yet, please feel free, feel free to come by. We have an open house on Saturday, actually. And I think that we can create a really wonderful partnership between the school system and our museum by enriching MCPS curriculum with comprehensive and authentic local African-American history education and learning opportunities, including student internships that focus on museum education, public history, digital humanities, and cultural preservation, and providing access to resources, trainings, and recommendations that specialize in racial trauma and mental health to improve the access and quality of health services to MCPS's diverse student and teacher body. Thank you so much for listening to us tonight and I hope that you consider these students' cries for help. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pelazo. And with that, a public address is closed. Thank you, everyone, for speaking tonight. We will move on to our consent items. If no one wishes to move an item out of consent, we will consider these items approved. Definitely want to say thank you to First Bank and Trust, who made a donation to MCPS schools along with a collection of school supplies. That's greatly appreciated. Got a lot of community support in the past few months, which is outstanding. So thank you, everyone. All right, next up, do I have a motion to approve the payment of the bills as presented?
Second.
Ms. Bond and Ms. Franklin, any discussion? Ms. Osborne, please call the roll.
Ms. Bond?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Dr. Getchery?
Yes.
Ms. Barton?
Yes.
Ms. Purcell?
(beep).
Dr. Roundtree?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Seven in favor.
Motion carries. Cool. All right, next up, we'll go into our business meeting and we'll start with a report from superintendent.
Thank you, Chair Hudson. I got a number of things to report on. First is working recently with the government, the county government. I'm happy to report that through the RFP process, the MCPS school system will continue with our anthem, Blue Cross Blue Shield, as our medical and health provider. And we're going to switch to Delta Dental for our dental insurance as of October 1st, 2025. It was a pleasure working with the county and I'm grateful that they were able to partner with us. And that saved both of us money and working together. I'm looking forward to more of that in the future. I also want to extend our sincere thanks and gratitude to our facilities, grounds, and maintenance teams for their dedicated work all summer long, ensuring that our schools are ready for the return of students and staff in a few weeks. One of our largest projects, as you're all aware, is the renovation at Christiansburg High School, which is going to be an active construction site for the next two years. If anybody's driven by there recently, you can see all the activity. It's great to see what's taken place and to see coming up from the ground and the foundation. But we are going to be working closely with Mr. Gwynn, the principal there, to ensure that we can open on time. And we, he will get information out as far as logistics for drop-off, which doors we can access, which we can't during, during the school year. That may change as the construction kind of moves along. So we encourage people to be in constant contact with the principal, be on the lookout for that information as it comes forward. And what we do, we do hope that everyone will have an understanding and know that there may be some inconveniences during this time, but the end product, we hope, will be definitely worth the wait and some of the inconvenience. You'll find in the superintendent's report, and I loaded up some information there about our capital plan. We had talked about this for a long time and working with the communities of the schools that we were looking at to move forward with. Got information from the communities, from staff members, from parents, from administrators, worked with our architect and kind of came up with some ideas. I shared that with all of you in the superintendent's update. It's in underneath my piece there. As long as the, along with the capital plan we reviewed at the board retreat in March, as well as the projected enrollment for the next ten years. I would encourage you to take a look at that, come up with questions and ideas and things that you may have. We didn't want to present it tonight because you didn't have a chance to digest all that information. So myself and Josh Bauer from Crabtree Architect are going to do a presentation at the August 20th meeting. So between now and then, if you could find the time to go over that and come up with your questions, concerns, and generate any ideas. Those are rough ideas. Those are rough ideas on what the cost would be. There are some different competing options for what those renovations might look like at each school. So please take a look at that. If you want to meet with me personally or sit down, I encourage that. We'll go over that. But Board Chair Hudson and I thought, as well as Ms. Bond and our planning, that it was important to give all the board members time to go over that instead of just throw something at you tonight. Okay? We had planned to have an update on Montgomery Central and the programs that are offered there. And it's quite a unique place and does a great service to many of our students. But due to vacations and stuff, Dr. Stanley wasn't able to do that, so we pushed that to August 20th. I know that we were expecting to do that tonight. And the last thing that I have is yesterday I participated in a meeting with the VDOE, school administrators from the region, and Radford University administrators on creating our governor's school for humanities in our region. It was a great meeting. We had some people from our curriculum departments across the division and our counseling programs and secondary, counselors in the secondary schools. We're working on developing that program and having that governor's school for humanities up and running potentially by next year at this time. So it's really exciting. And I look forward to our next full board meeting, which one of our board members, Ms. Purcell, is on, scheduled for September. That's exciting news and something that we should be really proud of and hopefully we can get that started in the fall. I believe that's all I have at this point. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Brogan. Board, any questions for Dr. Brogan? Kind of covered a lot of ground there.
I have one thing I'd like to say. Thank you, Dr. Brogan, for the Delta Dental Insurance for families of our staff and administration and for the school board. It's much appreciated.
There may be more information coming on that, but it's too early yet. But we are definitely switching to Delta Dental. There may be more better news in the near future. I don't know if that's proper, more better, but.
Sounds good to me.
Laura? It's more better, okay? Any other questions or comments, Board?
Hey, we lost Ed for just a moment, so he's going to call back in.
Okay. Give me a thumbs up when he's back.
So we should be there. Yeah. We're still connected, Sarah. Yeah. Should be fine.
Yeah, all right. Usually hot in here. It's actually chilly, isn't it?
Yeah, what's, what's that called? Dr. Getchery, you there? Just a second.
Yes, sorry about that.
Oh, great. Welcome back, buddy.
Technical difficulties. My apologies.
I don't know at what point we lost. Did you hear all of Dr. Brogan's updates?
I didn't hear all of his updates, but I'll- I didn't hear all of his updates, but I'll watch that section afterwards, and if I have questions, I can reach out to him.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, moving along. The grant applications are attached that have been submitted by the MCPS staff for this year's Montgomery County Education Foundation Grant Cycle. The purpose of this grant program is to provide education opportunities above and beyond what is available through public funding and to benefit the broad spectrum of Montgomery County public school students. Since this item was added a little bit late, most of you just saw this today. Ms. Connie Frogger is here to answer any questions we have before we go into a vote for that. Any questions from anyone? Hi, Connie. Okay, great. Do I have a motion to approve the grant proposal, Montgomery County Educational Foundation 2024 Grant Cycle?
So moved.
Second.
Dr. Roundtree and Ms. Purcell? Any discussion?
I'd like to thank the foundation for all the hard work. Remember when Phyllis Albritton, so many years ago, asked the question, why? We weren't using this tool, and it took off from there. So I want to thank everyone who's been involved over the years to help provide this resource to our students and staff and community.
Thank you, Penny. Great, 100%. Okay. Ms. Osborne, please call the roll.
Ms. Bond?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Dr. Getchery?
Yes.
Ms. Parton?
Yes.
Ms. Purcell?
Yes.
Dr. Roundtree?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Seven in favor.
Motion carries. Thank you for coming out, Connie. All right, next up is our Student School Board Representatives for the coming school year. Policy 1-2.8 states that the Montgomery County School Board shall approve the Student School Board Representatives each year. The representatives serve a one-year term that will end on June 30th, 2025. Selected representatives are as follows: From Auburn High School, Mallory Akers; from Blacksburg High School, Marina Lee; from Christiansburg High School, Desha Telazja; and from Eastmont Montgomery High School, Asia Mccone. Are they here tonight? They're not here, are they? Okay, cool. Do I have a motion to approve the 2024 Student School Board Representatives as presented?
Seven.
Ms. Bond and Ms. Franklin, any discussion?
Very hesitant in the very beginning when we talked about adding students, but it has been nothing but a pleasure, so I'm looking forward to working with the new group.
Great, thank you, Ms. Franklin. Ms. Osborne, please call the roll.
Ms. Bond?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Dr. Getchery?
Yes.
Ms. Parton?
Yes.
Ms. Purcell?
Yes.
Dr. Roundtree?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Seven in favor.
Motion carries. All right, next up is the certification of our school crisis plans. The Virginia Code requires that the superintendent certify that the school crisis plans are updated annually. These plans were shared confidentially with the school board for their review. Do I have a motion to certify annual completion of the school crisis plans?
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Parton and Dr. Roundtree, any discussion? Ms. Osborne, please call the roll.
Ms. Bond?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Dr. Getchery?
Yes.
Ms. Parton?
Yes.
Ms. Purcell?
Yes.
Dr. Roundtree?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Seven in favor.
Motion carries. All right, next up is the 2023-24 Year End Report and Carryover Funds. The administration's recommendations for the use of carryover funds is attached, and Ms. Angie Bland, our Director of Finance, is available for questions if needed. Do I have a motion to authorize the superintendent to submit a supplemental appropriation request to the Board of Supervisors?
Well, we could do it after the motion, but discussion. So moved.
Second.
Ms. Franklin and Dr. Roundtree, any discussion?
Okay, so whenever there's carryover funds, there's always the question of where that money come from, and if you didn't use all the money, how come you need more money every year when you ask for it? So an explanation to help folks understand how this works would be helpful.
You want us to do that now, Board Chair Hudson?
I think so, yeah, if we're going to approve it.
All right. Ms. Bland, would you come up and explain what the carryovers are and how we got those numbers?
So the majority, I have a list of them that I'm happy to share with you with individual amounts and that, but the majority of the carryover expenses come from salaries. Most of the operating expenses are spent, you know, as required. People spend down to the very last penny if they possibly can. They spend all the funds they can with that, but the majority of that can be in salaries. When you look at, I believe it's over $2 million in this one, the majority comes from the lapse, you know, open positions and things of that nature, and that includes salary and benefits. You'll also see the all-in tutoring. We're moving forward with the remainder of those that will carry for this year, this coming fiscal year, and the next one as well, that 2-point million.
Were there additional revenues that weren't accounted for that were moving over?
Yes, that is the $875,000 in additional revenues. Revenues are estimated based on what the state and the federal, we get projections from that, and of course, we get approvals from that. Additional revenues can be from rebates and things of that nature, where we have some certain contracts that we receive rebates. We never know what that's going to be. It's based on the spend each year of that contract. There's various categories for rebates, but the majority of those you'll see in vendor rebates and things of that nature.
The all-in tutoring, that's just being rolled over to be used for the next year.
Yes, ma'am. The entire amount will be appropriated into the operating budget, but it will be there for the next two years. We will have to carry over the remaining balance. It can't just sit in the revenue account, you know, for an additional two years, so we do need to move it over to the operating budget, so there will be a budget set up for that. The $2 million will take care of fiscal year '25 as well as fiscal year '26.
Thank you.
Appreciate that question, too, Ms. Franklin, because that's a great indicator, the all-in tutoring. We were given over $3 million from the state for that, but it's supposed to be over three years, so people would just come to the end of the year and say, well, jeez, they got $2 million there, they just didn't even spend it. Well, that was never the intention to spend that money this year, it was from the state, and we got the money this year, but it's accounted for for the next two years, three years in total. So it's a great example. Thank you.
Board, any other questions? Ms. Parton, your mic's on. Did you want to? You have anything? Sorry. Yeah, good. All right, great. Ms. Osborne, please call the roll.
Ms. Bond?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Dr. Getchery?
Yes.
Ms. Parton?
Yes.
Ms. Purcell?
Yes.
Dr. Roundtree?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Seven in favor.
Motion carries. Next up, 2023-24 Incumbrances to FY 2024-25. Open POs from the fiscal year 2023-24 are requested to be carried over to the fiscal year 24-25. Angie Bland, our Director of Finance, is available for questions if needed. Guess if there's any questions this time, we can do it before we make the motion.
Those are basically things that we bought but didn't pay for yet.
Right.
So we just got to carry that money over to pay for those.
Roger. Good, Board, any questions for Ms. Bland on that one? Okay. Do I have a motion to approve a letter to the Board of Supervisors for reappropriation of open POs from the fiscal year 2023-24 to the fiscal year 24-25, school operating and nutrition budgets?
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Purcell and Dr. Roundtree, any more discussion? Ms. Osborne, please call the roll.
Ms. Bond?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Dr. Getchery?
Yes.
Ms. Parton?
Yes.
Ms. Purcell?
Yes.
Dr. Roundtree?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Seven in favor.
Motion carries. All right, next up, the administration would like to request a capital project transfer from the Board of Supervisors for school improvement projects. Angie Bland, our Director of Finance, is available for questions if needed. We can start with any questions on that one before we go into a motion?
So where are the funds coming from? Where do we have carryover money from capital projects?
Let Ms. Bland answer that.
The funds that are covered for all of those projects are actually coming from the tax money. There are pennies off of the tax rate that is saved, and it's saved for capital projects, and so that's a set aside that we receive, and we'll receive that annually each year. We'll get that. And so after everything on this list, I think it's approximately $400,000 or so that remains in that account, and then going forward with fiscal year '25, then it will be reloaded again with the additional tax monies.
When will the Eastmont track be completed for this, and what is the, how many lanes on the track are there?
That's a really good, that's a very specific question. I appreciate that. I believe it's a six-lane track, because if we made it to an eight-lane track, which would be the standard size at most schools, it's a six-lane track now. We would have to renovate the entire field there and make it wider, so we didn't do that. It should be operational for spring this year.
Oh, yes.
That's the goal.
Nice, thank you.
And as Ms. Bland said, the two cents on the tax levy is the real estate monies that we have to ask the Board of Supervisors to get the appropriations for. And then she referenced, I believe you referenced, the reserve account, which is what we have in there right now, which is monies for capital that we didn't spend that's in that reserve account, that when we do want to allocate that as well, we would have to ask for the Board, you all first, and then the Board of Supervisors to transfer. These monies, we want to take from the operating budget because we need to pay them right away. This work is taking place now.
Did I get that right, Ms. Bland?
That is correct.
Thank you.
So I just want to add to that, hopefully the Board of Supervisor approval, of course. Thank you all so much for putting that Eastmont track first and foremost. I've been fighting that for years, and those students there who haven't been able to participate in that sport, but have been able to participate in that sport at every other school, I have, my heart's gone out to them, and I'm finally glad to see, and I know my community is glad to see, that that's finally getting taken care of, and it has been put to the forefront. So thank you guys so much for that. It's much appreciated.
So I know with our newly renovated Christiansburg Primary Elementary in Bellevue, there were some, especially painting and doors that needed to be upgraded or matched, or have we done all those things?
I believe there's some painting in process. I do not know the specific schools, I believe...
I could research and get that back for you. We did some work at each of those schools, so I don't know if it's exactly what you're talking about, but I'll ask Mr. Harris to give us an update on what we did and what we're planning to do, and so I'll email the full board, so I don't want to misspeak.
I'd just like to add, just looking at this list of items that are enumerated, certainly the track, we've been talking about that for quite a while, that's awesome. I know the HVAC at Kips, we've talked about that for a while. The updates to the parking lots makes me super excited, particularly with Blacksburg High School, dropping off kids. Every year, they try to patch that darn thing, and like, a month in, it's tore up again, so that makes me very happy. And the basketball goals, those things have been rough for a while, so. A lot of good stuff on here that touches every corner of the county, so that's outstanding. Your mic's off, Penny, I'm sorry.
So almost $10,000, does that involve more than just putting goals up?
It does. I can speak a little bit on that. There's actually a lot of site work that has to go into it. There's concrete that goes down pretty far. It actually goes up pretty high, because of the steel, the concrete goes pretty deep, so it's more costly than what you realize when you start doing site work on the property to make it safe for the students.
How many goals are we talking?
Two, two.
Okay, Board, do I have a motion to authorize a request to the Board of Supervisors for a capital project transfer of $2,480,233 to the 2024-25 school operating budget?
So moved.
Ms. Franklin and Ms. Bond, any more discussion, Board? Ms. Osborne, please call the roll.
Ms. Bond?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Dr. Getchery?
Yes.
Ms. Parton?
Yes.
Ms. Purcell?
Yes.
Dr. Roundtree?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Seven in favor.
Motion carries. All right, next up, the science textbook adoptions were provided to the Board for Review on June 18th. They are brought back for approval this evening. Do I have a motion to approve the science textbook adoptions as presented?
So moved.
Ms. Purcell and Ms. Franklin, any discussion?
Sorry to the science teachers for taking so long and holding up your planning.
Yes, absolutely. Okay, Ms. Osborne, please call the roll.
Ms. Bond?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Dr. Getchery?
Yes.
Ms. Parton?
Yes.
Ms. Purcell?
Yes.
Dr. Roundtree?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Seven in favor.
Motion carries. Next up, proposed provisions to the sick leave policy based on recommendations from the Sick Leave Bank Committee are presented for approval. This was presented for review on June 18th. Do I have a motion to approve the sick leave bank policy as presented?
So moved. Second.
Dr. Roundtree and Ms. Franklin, any discussion?
So I raised the question that had come to me from a retiring employee about retirees being able to contribute vacation time that they hadn't used to the sick bank. Did we look into that?
So the suggestion of bringing, allowing retirees to donate sick leave to the sick bank was not something we included in the proposal that was brought to you in the last reading. I don't know if that's something the Board wants to take action on. Currently, that's not an option. Members of the sick bank are able, while they are employees, they can donate up to five days at any time. They can also donate up to five days to transfer to another employee who's also a member of the sick bank.
So are you saying we can't do that, or we just didn't look at it?
We did look at it, but it's hard to determine. There could be a cost involved. You know, when employees are exiting the school, exiting the school division, you know, retiring and leaving us, if they're donating their sick days, there's no realized gain that year because they're not employed and saving us sick days. So there's just a question... So there's just a question of, of whether that could potentially put, whether there could be a potential cost or a drain involved. Whereas if, if employees donate time while they're with us, that's going to be a realized savings because those are employees who wouldn't be using all of their sick leave because they've donated a day, or in some cases, up to five days.
So do we pay back any amount of sick days?
We do. So when individuals retire from the school division, they do have the option of being paid back for their sick leave at their daily rate up to a cap of $5,000.
Okay, so it's going to be an expense to a certain point whether they leave with them or whether they donate them back. So I myself would like us to look into that if folks are willing to do that, to help support our employees.
Is it just a matter of having a conversation with them before they leave to ask if they want to contribute to the sick bank, as opposed to waiting until after they've left and then they said, oh, I've got this potentially $5,000 I want to give back?
It would be something we would communicate to them when they're in the process of, of planning retirement, yes.
Normally, employees that have been healthy, knock on wood, would retire and they would exhaust that $5,000 cap and still have many days left. So if they wanted to donate them, they could. Now, I know this point was raised up at the last meeting by one of our Board members, but does all the Board want us to look at that? If the majority of the Board wants us to include that, we can. But that wasn't the direction that we had at the last Board meeting.
I just asked the question at the last Board meeting.
Right. So what I'm saying is, the first read was what it was. If the Board wants us to go back and add that, we can. As Dr. Wynder said, there's a potential cost in it, but that's really not the issue. If you all want to do that, you know, we didn't take that as a Board directive, so we didn't act on it. If you want us to, we will.
So I guess, let me get my, my parliamentary cap on here, right? So, so we have, we have a motion.
Let me say this to be clear.
Yeah.
So I wasn't asking that this be added at this point. I was asking a question. So I don't see any reason for us not to approve what's in front of us tonight.
Okay.
But we can always add something later.
Absolutely.
Once we get more information.
Okay.
That's a great point, and I appreciate the clarification because we weren't sure. That's great.
So then, can I get just, just head nods? Is the majority of the Board interested in getting more information about that for future consideration? Couple head nods, couple head nods.
Yes, my answer would be yes.
Okay, cool.
Yeah, yes, I'd like more specific information, definitely.
Okay, okay, great. So we'll go ahead with the approval tonight, but we would like to see more information about a future change potentially. Okay, thank you, thank you for clarifying, Ms. Franklin. Any other questions, Board, before we move to vote? We do have a motion on the table, right? Okay. All right. Ms. Osborne, please call the roll.
Ms. Bond. Ms. Franklin.
Yes.
Dr. Gitcher.
Yes.
Ms. Parton.
Yes.
Ms. Purcell.
Yes.
Dr. Roundtree.
Yes.
Mr. Hudson.
Yes.
Seven in favor.
Motion carries. All right, next up, Dr. Thomas Brewster, our Assistant Director of Human Resources, and Eddie Walters, our Director of Transportation, will provide a proposal to reclassify our vehicle fleet technicians from their current salary scale to the newly created CM-8 salary scale, aligning their compensation with that of bus drivers. And this is a presentation only.
Good evening, Chair Hudson, members of the School Board, and Dr. Bragan. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to present our proposal for the reclassification of our vehicle fleet technicians, aligning their hourly salary compensation with that of our bus drivers. Our goal is to transition our vehicle fleet technicians from their current CL salary schedule to a new CM-8 salary schedule. This change is intended to bring their pay in line with the hourly rates of our bus drivers. We have faced challenges in attracting and retaining experienced mechanics. By adjusting their pay schedule, we aim to make these positions more appealing and competitive. Additionally, many of our vehicle fleet technicians also take on the responsibility of driving buses alongside their mechanical duties. Our proposal ensures fair compensation for these dual responsibilities. Currently, our vehicle fleet technicians are on the CL pay schedule, which ranges from $36,341 to $70,892.87. We propose moving them to the CM-8 pay schedule, aligning their compensation with the hourly rates of our bus drivers, resulting in a new range from $45,694 to $76,287.74. The estimated cost of implementing this change is approximately $39,592.86, covering the necessary salary adjustments for the eight-hour, the new eight-hour CM-8 scale. Additionally, we estimate the cost of $14,139.49 for VICA, additional VRS contributions, and potential overtime at the new rate totaling around $53,732.35. However, by eliminating two 4.2-hour bus driver positions, we anticipate saving approximately $33,611.92, reducing the cost further to $20,120.43. This adjustment offers significant benefits, including enhancing our ability to attract and retain skilled vehicle fleet technicians, therefore reducing turnover. It also ensures fair compensation, reflecting the value and responsibility of their work, especially given their dual roles. In conclusion, reclassifying our fleet vehicle fleet technicians to the new CM-8 salary scale is a strategic move. It addresses our challenge in recruitment and retention, ensures fair compensation for dual responsibilities, and acknowledges the specialized skills required for these positions. We recommend the Board reviewing this proposal to enhance the efficiency and stability of our fleet management operations. And thank you once again for allowing us the opportunity to present this proposal. Mr. Walters and I are here to answer any questions that you might have.
Okay, so thank you for looking at the salary scale. I can't believe that our technicians were not being paid at the rate of our bus drivers. So what is the impact of eliminating the two 4.2 positions?
Well, currently, those are positions that we have consolidated routes. Oh, I'm sorry. Those are, those are two routes that we have consolidated. So right now, we believe that we won't need them in the near future. But, you know, you never know. This depends on, you know, student populations and, and, you know, new subdivisions. But right now, we're pretty confident that, that we don't need those.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I just want to say thank you, I appreciate it, because I know a couple of years ago, if it weren't for our technicians stepping up, we wouldn't have a lot of buses on the road. And so I say kudos to them, and they deserve it, and I appreciate it.
So to put, give you a little perspective, we looked at last year, our technicians between either a morning or an afternoon route drove 523 times while still servicing our fleets.
And I'm going to add to what Ms. Bond said. I'm so glad to see this finally, because I know this has been a huge issue. I've heard about it from drivers, I've heard about it from lots of different people. So kudos to you. I know how much mechanics make, and we're not paying, we're not paying our mechanics enough. So, and they do, they step up and they go above and beyond every day. And I know we've had a problem keeping them and wanting to keep them here. So absolutely, they deserve this and then some. So thank you guys so much for, for bringing this to the forefront and letting us get this pay grade and get them to where they need to be.
It's still not where they need to be, but it will help the situation and, again, that struggle of trying to keep the buses running while you're driving at the same time doesn't work well. So I hope that we can look at all of our pay scales, because this is a continuous thing that we've been doing for the last couple of years, is going back and looking at positions we can't fill, and the simple thing of got to pay them more, and saying that for years. If you don't pay people, they won't come. So I hope we're going to do a deep dive to see what else we can do to make sure we're paying folks at the rate they should be paid.
Yeah, thank you. Also, just a brief question. Are all of our vehicle fleet technicians trained as bus drivers as well? And if, if not, can we encourage the training of them or pay for that training?
Yes, they, all of our current technicians are trained, school bus drivers. And since basically 2020, anyone that we hire on, that's a criteria that they have as a technician, that they will be required and they, they have the necessary training.
Right.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Ms. Purcell?
Yeah, I do have one question, follow-up about the consolidation of bus routes. How has that potentially lengthened the rides that some children have to have?
These particular routes, they were actually eliminated last year. And at the time, it was when we do our, our bus load counts and we start reviewing our routes, these were routes that we realized that could be consolidated and absorbed between, typically it's two or three routes. And we didn't see a significant time increase to these routes. Some of them may have been 10 minutes, 15 minutes, I don't have those exact numbers, but we didn't see a significant increase.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Dr. Gitcher, any questions?
Thank you. I, I want to echo the sentiments of my fellow Board members. I'm happy to see this increase. I think it was Ms. Franklin who asked about a kind of a broader analysis of the division. And that recalls for me at the conversation that I had earlier, I think it was in January or February, asking about pay compression. And, and I would just echo that sentiment, that it would be refreshing to see an analysis in other areas of the division as well to, to see if this, if we can improve retention by ensuring that we are being as competitive as possible with our current budget constraints to, to retain high-quality employers.
Okay, great. Board, when we put this on the agenda tonight, we, we, we put this as an information only because we didn't want to ask for votes on the first night that you've seen it, but seems like there's support here. Is there interest in, in making a motion tonight to go ahead and move forward with this?
I'm like, second.
Okay. I guess the motion to approve as presented. Any more discussion, Board? Okay, great. Ms. Osborne, please call the roll.
Ms. Bond.
Yes.
Ms. Franklin.
Yes.
Dr. Gitcher.
Yes, absolutely.
Ms. Parton.
Yes.
Ms. Purcell.
Yes.
Dr. Roundtree.
Yes.
Mr. Hudson.
Yes.
Seven in favor.
Motion carries. All right, next up, Dr. Brewster gets to stay, and Dante Harris, our Director of Facilities, will present a proposal to increase the starting salary for building and grounds positions for the purpose of improving recruitment, retention, and salary competitiveness with surrounding localities.
Chair Hudson, members of the School Board, and Dr. Bragan, thank you for the opportunity to present a proposal this evening for updating our salary schedule, salary structure for our building and ground staff within Montgomery County Public Schools. Our main objective is to raise the entry-level salary for these roles from $31,200 to $34,359 for the, for 2024 and 25 fiscal year. This adjustment aims to make our compensation more competitive with similar roles in Montgomery County, Town of Blacksburg, Christiansburg, and other nearby school districts. And I do want to point out the chart here. We are currently at $31,200. This would make us competitive with all of our surrounding competitors in terms of building and grounds and starting salary. Like our fleet technicians, we've also encountered significant challenges in attracting and retaining employees for these positions, which is one key reason for proposing this change. By offering a higher salary, starting salary, we hope to make these jobs more appealing to potential candidates, therefore improving both recruitment and retention. Additionally, the proposed increase will help align our pay rates with those of neighboring regions, ensuring that our salaries remain competitive. Currently, our building grounds staff are on the CH salary scale, which ranges from $31,200 to $57,225.92. We propose increasing the starting pay to $34,359, requiring a new salary scale with an upper range extending to $57,229.52. Implementing this proposal will involve several costs, including adjusting the salaries of our current staff to fit the new scale. We also anticipate additional expenses for VICA, or excuse me, for VICA and VRS contributions due to increased salaries. The total estimated cost for these adjustments is $20,510.67. To offset these expenses, we plan not to fill up to two new positions in grounds and maintenance that were included in the 2024-25 budget. This proposal offers several important benefits. A higher starting salary will help us attract and retain skilled workers, reducing turnover. It also ensures that our staff are fairly compensated, reflecting the responsibilities and value of their work. By aligning our salaries with the market, we can improve morale and job satisfaction among our building and grounds employees, fostering a more positive work environment. In summary, raising the starting salary for our building and ground staff to $34,359 is a thoughtful approach to addressing our recruitment challenges, ensuring fair compensation, and maintaining market competitiveness. We recommend reviewing this proposal to enhance the efficiency and stability of our building and grounds workforce. Thank you for the opportunity to share this proposal. Mr. Harris and I are here to answer any questions that you might have.
Again, thank you. This is something I've been kind of fussing about for a while, saying we need to be, I've had people come to me and say, you know, we're going to the town because we make more money. And I don't think people realize how many facilities we have. It's not only the schools, but it's the fields and, and the snow removal. And, well, we had six people trying to make all of that happen. It's just, it was crazy. So I appreciate this, I think everybody else will appreciate this, and it takes a village to make the schools work. So I think we have to understand that, it takes everybody.
So with the beginning pay being increased, and we see where everyone else is, are the increments in raises at the same level?
There, there are increments that start larger in the beginning and get smaller as they progress through the school, through the scale.
So how many folks do we have doing grounds now? And we're going to eliminate up to two?
Currently, we have four grounds people. We are budgeted for six, but we only have four position fields.
Okay, so we have four. We budgeted to add two more. Now we're going to raise the pay, make those folks work harder, or keep working harder, because we're still not going to hire two more people. Is that correct?
No, I think they got two positions.
Right, but they're saying they want to eliminate.
No, we're going to, we got appropriated for three positions, but we're only going to fill two more, so that'll make us have eight people.
Okay, I misunderstood.
Yeah, so we're going to have eight people.
So eight people, still not enough.
It, it helps.
It helps, but it's, let's, let's, you know, be real, eight people is still not enough, but. Eight people is still not enough, but, you know, it's a start.
That will, it will make a big difference for us. Last year, we interviewed three individuals and all three people turned down the job because of pay. I personally called each individual up and asked them, and one of the individuals went to the Town of Blacksburg. One person did stay back at VDOT. And everybody said it was the pay that was the reason why. They liked the job, they liked, wanted to come work for the school division, but the pay was the main reason. But we do thank everyone for supporting our department in that. I mean, as people have mentioned, the four guys that we do have, they are really working hard. I mean, that's probably one of the hardest working groups that I have in my department. And they don't really have a lot of slack time because if they miss, they're already behind on the grounds. So this will help them out a whole lot. I mean, we're trying to get them help with getting them, gotten them equipment last year to new tractors, we got string trimmers. So we're trying to do as best that we can to make the job a little bit more easier for them because they didn't have equipment when I started. So everything that you all can do to help us makes a great difference for us and our department.
You mentioned equipment. So you said we've added some. What else do we need to do?
We still need at least one more tractor. And we're trying to get three pressure washers because we wanna pressure wash the sidewalks. As you all know, this, like in our project list, we try to split things out throughout the whole county this year. We did get a little bit, little bit behind when the money was released to us, but we are trying to be able to improve the looks of the school. That's been our goal this year. So one of the big things that we're trying to get done is the skill set is to try to get pesticide license so that our employees can be able to spray for weeds because we got landscape beds with weeds growing up through the moach. And so that's been a big thing for me to try to be able to get eradicated because that presence when you walk up to the school is a big thing. You know, I mean, I got two kids in the school division, my own self, and it's one of my pet peeves is for us to be able to eliminate because it's kinda wasted effort if we go out there. Last year, we put down moach, but then two weeks later, you had weeds going right back through the moach. So we need at least one more tractor and we need the pressure washers so we can do the sidewalks because that is a visible point for especially like the elementary schools as far as all the kids standing out there for the bus pickup and drop off. So we want that to be a look nice and gleaming when students come to the schools.
So for the quality or the power of pressure washers, what would that cost?
We got pricing, it's like almost $6,000 of pressure washing. Because our plan is to kinda cut the division into thirds. And so that way, we wanted to try to have at least three individuals in each area. So that way, then we can be able to maintain that in like a little work sale. And so that way, we could do buildings and grounds because right now, we really do just grounds, we don't really do buildings. And so we're trying to be able to establish a schedule so that way that everything can kinda stay within sync. It's just right now with the personnel being so short, it's just hard for us to try to catch up. But that's our known term goal is to try to put the division in the three areas so that way we can maintain things a lot better.
So we would need a total of nine?
Nine people, yeah. I wanna get to nine people at minimum.
And three pressure washers.
And three pressure washers, correct.
And a tractor, you said? And a tractor?
Yes, and one tractor, yes.
I just figured pressure washers were cheaper.
No, not commercial ones.
Yeah.
And that was just to add in, I know it was a question asked when Ms. Glenn was up. I mean, the basketball goals at Beeks, those are commercial grade basketball goals. So that's not just your regular standard basketball goal, but that's the heavy duty post because what they have now is like back from the 60s or something, it's all rested out. So we would like, no, we wanna, it would look like what's in Montgomery Central. Those are the goals that we're putting up. The other side of that court, we need to get a tree removed because the roots are kinda broken up the court. And then once we can get that tree removed, then we can replace that section right there and then we get two more goals. We are trying to replace like all the nets and the goals that's messed up in the division this summer so that kids can have somewhere to be able to play at because we're trying to be able to make sure as a quality as a whole, we're trying to bring parity within the division.
Thank you.
We'll keep going around. Dr. Roundtree?
Yeah, thanks for putting this together. I like the idea of getting, getting people a little more money to get them these hard-to-fill positions filled. So how much is the tractor, by the way? Since we got the pressure washers.
Oh, last year, we spent like $12,500 for one tractor.
All right.
That's what we spent. And that was a John Deere tractor is what we purchased last year.
Okay, thanks.
That's like a mowing tractor. Yeah, okay, not a tractor tractor.
Not a tractor tractor, it's like a zero turn.
Yeah, gotcha, okay.
Yeah, that's cheap for a regular tractor. So it's great too, and these guys certainly deserve it and they need a lot more help, but I'm glad to see that we're, we're trying to get a good jump and a good start on this and hopefully many more to come. And you guys, everything and the equipment you need. So you just keep letting us know.
We greatly appreciate that.
Okay, great, thank you.
Ms. Purcell?
So I recall from a joint meeting with the Board of Supervisors at the beginning of the year, there'd been some discussion about potentially sharing resources and also outsourcing resources, just things that may be specific and fall out of the realm of expertise or that might be better to outsource. Because I even see, you know, the Town of Blacksburg salary being the highest, they outsource their mowing for sure because I see the trucks and the t-shirts when I'm over at the municipal park two mornings a week. So not to begrudge anyone a job or fair compensation, but so that resources aren't stretched super thin. That is, that's my, my question, kind of where does that potentially stand?
We had a number of conversations with the county, Ms. Hill's office and our office and going back and forth. And we didn't really see how we could, by combining, it would make it any easier for us. Because they don't have a great many people and we don't have a great many people. And if we're gonna be doing, the work isn't getting less, right? So we did talk about it, we thought it'd be a good idea. It didn't seem feasible except for a couple of things like in potentially when the need arose and sharing some equipment. And those conversations, we will take when we need it, like if there's snow removal or something in those times, they may have some of the heavy equipment we could borrow. But as far as the personnel, when we had the conversations, like when we delved deeper as opposed to just talking about hypothetically, the number of maintenance people they have and the number that we have, combining them wouldn't have made it any more efficient to get the grasses cut and the buildings maintained. So it didn't really seem feasible at that point.
And what about just outsourcing particular tasks that made sense to work with a private company for, for certain tasks rather than maintaining a lot of equipment or that kind of thing?
We didn't explore that. It could be an option if that's where the board wants to go. We didn't explore outsourcing that at this time. The only time we've outsourced anything since I've been here was some custodial work when we couldn't hire the people and our buildings needed to be maintained. And we used, I think, I don't know if it was Serpur or one of the companies came in, but then we also, was it? Sintas, yeah. We have not explored outsourcing. If that's the position the board wants to take, we could look into that.
So just, you know, just a concern, when we were talking about bus drivers, we can't, I mean, I think there might be bus driving contracting companies, but I think it's better to, that's not something we can outsource. Or when we heard Ms. Walden talk during public comment, she talked about the, the turnover and lack of pay for paraprofessionals. We can't outsource that support for, for our kids. But having a contract for potential snow removal or other things that are related to ground maintenance, does that make sense rather than trying to keep everything in-house and spread a few people very thin?
There's pluses and minuses to doing that, and I could definitely get some information and bring it back to the School Board if that's what you want me to do. We could definitely do that.
Great, thank you.
Okay, so do we need a consensus of the board if we want to entertain that?
I was gonna say, because I don't know that I'm for that.
I am not.
We've got four people, potentially six, and I, I'm not for outsourcing because if Blacksburg's pay is higher than ours, then they're paying more even if they're outsourcing.
They may have, I don't know how many employees they have, I don't know what they do. I know that mowing is outsourced for sure.
Right, but what I'm saying is they're still paying that, and that's not cheap. It's not cheap at all. So for outlanding companies to, to mow, so I'm, I'm personally not interested in that.
I mean, I guess from a, from a board standpoint, at this point in all, we're asking is, the ask is just for more information, I guess, is there, are there four heads nods who want more information before we even consider a decision? I see two no's at least.
So our experience with outsourcing with our nutrition program, there was a great need because we were losing money. And it has not gone the way it was expected to go. And we just awarded a new contract. If we have folks who are citizens in our community, who are willing to do the job and be paid a decent wage for it, I think we should be offering that to them. Outsourcing, you lose a lot of control. So we just need to be doing the right things to make sure that we're compensating and having the right equipment for folks who wanna be a part of Montgomery County's school system to do, to fill these jobs.
I think the complexities of outsourcing this type of item are going to be difficult, largely because we have children on these grounds and we vet all of our employees. And also, the nutrition programs are large enough programs that they are also vetting all of their employees. They have the appropriate infrastructure for that. I don't know that grounds companies are going to have that appropriate infrastructure to go through and vet every employee that's going to be coming onto our grounds to mow the grass. And it's, I would like to have the option for them to, to be able to utilize contractors on the weekend or something when school's not in session if things are behind and everybody's stretched thin. I don't know if that, those are options or if they're being evaluated to see that they are stretched thin to get some relief in there. But yeah, it's, I'm in, I'm in agreement. I think it's a, the complexities are going to be, be, cause spending time on something that we're going to end up not voting for getting it, getting it outsourced.
I guess you're still kinda going around. Any other, any other comments from Ms. Bond or Ms. Parton?
So I kinda have to agree with what Ms. Bond and Dr. Roundtree said. If we're gonna spend the money to outsource, I don't know exactly how much that would be. I do know mowing companies are expensive, and I am a little concerned about the vetting of the employees as well with that because there could be students around possibly when some of that's going on as well. And there would, would there be some type of, what type of liability maybe would there be if there would be something that was contracted out and there was an incident or somebody got hurt on our property that wasn't an employee of ours? That was my thought too. I'm not sure how that would work, but that would be a concern as well.
Dr. Getchere?
I, I think the consensus is formed here. I do have a, a question about the pay scale if, when, I don't know if everybody has, has had an opportunity to speak, but I do have a question about that.
Yeah, go ahead.
I, I just want to echo with all my colleagues who said, I, all the board members, I, I applaud the effort to, to attract employees. One of the questions that I have has to do with the upper limit because this isn't an issue just about hiring people, but also retention. Because I know that we have custodial staff who've been in grounds, who've been with us for many years. So in looking at the proposed scale, there's very little difference at the upper end. It's negligible, it's, it's a couple of dollars. If going to the objective slide where you do some comparisons with some of the other entities, employers in the area, it just, the comparison is just at the beginning, the opening end of the scale. I'm curious to know, say for either Montgomery County or the Town of Blacksburg, what's the upper limit of their pay scale? Because I'm thinking if I'm applying for a job and I'm seeing a pay scale, I'm not just looking at the, the starting salary, but what's the potential for the future? And also thinking about those employees that we have now who've been with us for, for some time and to, you know, we wanna, we wanna keep these people.
I can go back and research the upper levels of those scales, but at the time, the objective was to raise the starting salary and then create a scale from there that, that fits within that, within that realm. So I can go back and research that and bring it back to the board, what those ranges are and how they compare.
Okay, I, I appreciate that. I think that's good when we're, we're looking at the difficulties we faced with hiring people, not just looking at the, the starting salary, but also just the range in general. Thank you.
Great. I guess I would just echo some of the comments that were made earlier, certainly appreciate the efforts put in to try to find ways to be competitive. You know, it would be nice to do it across the board, but we gotta do it in places where we're struggling, right? So appreciate the effort here. You know, we know we have other areas to address, the paraprofessionals that we heard from earlier, but we gotta, we gotta plug the holes where we can. So like the last one, we didn't wanna necessarily put this on as an action item with, with it just being the first time hearing it. Sounds like there is a little more question and conversation on this one, maybe some more, some more information that we wanted on this one, but certainly we could entertain a motion tonight if, if that's the will of the board.
I'll make a mention, second.
Oh, okay. So we have a motion by Ms. Franklin. We're in fashion, I'm sorry. And a second by Dr. Roundtree. Any more discussion? And that's not to say that we couldn't make, make an adjustment at that higher end later if we choose to, right? But getting that starting salary increase now will help with hiring now. So that's, that's a good thing. Okay, great. Ms. Osborne, please call the roll.
Ms. Bond? Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Dr. Getchere?
Yes, absolutely.
Ms. Parton?
Yes.
Ms. Purcell?
Yes.
Dr. Roundtree?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Seven in favor?
Motion carries. Thank you, sir.
Thank you all.
All right. We're doing great, board. A lot of stuff tonight, y'all are powering through here. Next up, legislative policy adjustments for the 2024 state legislative session are presented for first reading tonight as prepared by Sands Anderson. The policies will be brought back on August 20th for approval. We all got those packets, there's a lot of information in there. And so tonight is just more questions, conversations around that. They spanned all over the place. So if you have any specific questions, we can try to get the right people up here to help answer, but. Any questions? Anybody wanna start?
Okay, so for me, you know, I tried to read through and understand all of these, which for some years, this is not that many. It's helpful if there is something to compare it to. So if something has changed, that it be highlighted as the whole bill or that was presented and passed, so I'd be able to understand what the change was.
Ms. Franklin, if you scroll, if you scroll down to where you are, I think the policies are listed individually and with their review, and any changes are highlighted in a different color, proposed changes. In the individual policies, I know it's confusing, you got that like chart up- In the individual policies, I know it's confusing. You got that like chart up top. And if you scroll to the bottom, all the individual policies are listed. And within each policy, any change is highlighted in a different color with a strikeout if it's a removal or if it's just an addition in a different color. That may be helpful in going over that.
The summaries were helpful on the table, but it was a little bit confusing that the actual policies.
And I always forget to do that extra scroll, I guess because I'm tired of reading all that.
I understand.
Okay, thank you. I'll go back and review that.
Any other questions or comments, board? It was a lot to digest. I appreciate, I appreciate getting that stuff early. I know there was an email that got sent that kind of helped get it out there for us, but still a lot to go through. We'll have another opportunity to obviously discuss and bring it back for vote, but. Dr. Getchery, I can't see your face. Do you have anything?
Yeah, I struggled a little bit because sometimes the colors weren't, there was at least one where color wasn't used. There was underlining. So I struggled a little bit there. Yeah, it's just, it's a lot.
Dr. Getchery, if that was policy five dash one point two, then underlining is a mistake.
Let me see. That five one two, yeah.
It's a total mistake. The underline should just be regular text. That was confusing for us too.
Okay, okay, thank you.
But if anyone has questions after review, please reach out to me. We'll see if we can get those questions before the meeting and bring it to a discussion at the meeting if that's what you all want.
I know that I would appreciate the ability to have a little bit more of a discussion because this was prepared by Vince Anderson. I know that before there was some changes, but yeah, I'll stop talking now.
I guess I'm a little confused then on five one two. Like is that a new policy or were there any changes to that? If you take away all the underlying stuff, was there anything that had actually changed? Did I just miss it? I don't see any red in there unless I'm just missing it.
It's a little bit up at the very top.
There was one word.
One word.
Ethnic or.
Ethnic.
Ethnic. And that was the only one I found in that entire policy. We did call about the underlines and that was a mistake they made. And we asked, was that maybe because there's an injunction with a number of states with the new title law, Title IX legislation that Virginia is part of, and that was not it.
Okay. Yeah, so again, that's a lot to digest, but it's all, I mean, I guess at the end of the day, like a lot of it is, I'm not sure how much leeway we have in modifying a lot of that stuff that's coming straight from legislature, but still got to make sure everybody has a chance to digest it and ask questions, so.
To your point there, everything is directly from legislation. We have to have.
Okay. Any other comments or questions, board?
Chair Hudson, can I just ask one real quick question? So with Sands Anderson having prepared this, I know that there are some things that are required certainly by legislation. I think one of the questions that I had is are there areas in which it, where there should be considerations in the school board where it's not straightforward? Or is this strictly confined to what was absolutely mandated? And if that's not clear, I apologize. I guess, you know, we're, we don't have a direct conversation with our legal counsel about the document. And so obviously we can't ask, we can't ask questions directly to legal counsel about these proposed changes. I don't know if anybody else wonders about that.
So actually, in the past, we have had legal counsel present so that we could ask questions about these changes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll try to figure out how to range that for sure.
I do have a specific question about policy one dash six point eight citizen participation. Just looking at what's been, the language that's been added. And this is specifically regarding students speaking during public comment. And we had a lot of students speak tonight at public comment. And we're adding language that says that we might require an ID card or a report card or something like that. Is that just in the event that there is a concern that a speaker is misrepresenting themselves?
That would be my belief, and it does say we may do that. So that's if we feel there's a lot of people that are coming and protesting on particular things and they're not our students and representing and such, I think we, it gives us the right to do that. But I wouldn't do that as a practice. I don't believe we should do that.
Thank you.
Okay, board, any more discussion? Okay, great. Next up, Jason Garrettson, our Director of Student Services and Safety, will present proposed updates to the student code of conduct for first read. They'll be brought back for approval on August 20th.
Thank you, Chair Hudson. Really no, really no presentation, just a matter of incorporating this. Some suggested updates, corrections, really lumped in with the other policies you have before you. These are just more locally generated rather than legislative. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Board, who wants to start?
So with the conversations around the use of the N-word, because I'm going to bring this up again under old business, just so you know. I was hoping to see some language that was stronger related to hate speech and outlining what that looks like, what that sounds like.
If that's the board's wish, administration can easily incorporate some of that language. This is a first read. We did try to, you see many of the updates are essentially corrections, some grammatical pieces, some organizational pieces. And then we do try to incorporate some other current policies such as some new information coming from Title IX and your new cell phone policy. And we also tried to address some situations that we saw this past school year involving sharing of inappropriate items at school and that resulting in some pretty heavy consequences for students. Trying to make sure that's clearly stated in the policy. We certainly can add additional language if it's the board's desire around any kind of hate speech, racial slurs.
Okay, so it's concerning to me that it would have to come to the board when there's adjustments being made to the code. And there has been much conversation around this that that would also not be at the forefront of thinking, is there something we need to change here related to that?
I apologize if we've overlooked that. We basically sat down with the policy and tried to make corrections that clearly were mistakes, typos, formats, issues, concerns like that. And much of the rest of it is consistent with what's been required. Certainly, again, if it's the board's desire, there's no issue with us incorporating additional statements regarding what's been presented at the last several board meetings.
Dr. Brean, you stepped out. Maybe when that comment was made, I'm not sure if you heard it, but.
I did not.
Basically just, you know, comment feeling like one thing that appears to be missing is stronger language dealing with hate speech, racial language, some of the stuff that we've heard in the past couple of meetings.
I mean, it's in the code of conduct. Any racial language, any racially motivated acts, any specific hate speech. I'm not sure. I apologize, had to relieve myself, but what was the question?
Ms. Franklin, I want to put words in your mouth, why don't you?
So my concern was that there wasn't some stronger language around those issues. Because when the comment was made, when you were looking at issues that had occurred in the buildings, that you put language in to try to help address those concerns. And even though it may be stated, it's been stated and it's not doing any good because what we're hearing, it continues. So those were my comments.
I'm still not sure of the question. What are you asking to be included in the code of conduct? That's not here. That would change.
Some stronger language around hate speech.
Okay.
Because what we have is not addressing the issue evidently.
I mean, if I could share some thoughts on that, I mean, I'm kind of going out of turn here, I apologize. But I've thought about this a lot and kind of leading up to this meeting. I mean, I think what we need certainly is a more comprehensive strategy for how we're going to deal with a lot of the stuff that we've been hearing from many of the folks at these last meetings and not just this year. We know this has been going on. I mean, I think that there's a lot of facets to that, but it feels like it kind of starts with the code of conduct, right? I mean, that's what the students get. They're supposed to read. Their parents are supposed to read. They sign it, they return it, right? So I don't think that just adding some words in here is going to solve all the problems, but it's a start, right? And we should at least contemplate what that might look like. Again, as a part of a more comprehensive solution because. So I agree with you, Ms. Franklin.
I agree, and I think that though there needs to be a discipline measure of if it's used, there, it, there's no questions asked. If you use the word, it's, this is going to happen. And I think we need to take more discipline on. I've been saying that forever as well. And it doesn't matter who or how or what. If it's used, you're going home. Whether it's, you know, to do community service, whether it's just, and although a speaker said, well, it doesn't do any good to do that kind of stuff, I personally think it does. You do it enough and somebody's going to maybe wake up and realize that's not acceptable. But I think we need to lay down what we are going to do and we need to stick with it. We need to let our buildings know this is what we expect.
Yeah, I agree, and I have debated about this long, plod and read a lot of other school policies this summer on this. Not to water it down or anything, but we need to include the C-word and B-word when referring to women, the F-word when referring to our queer community. And there's another one that I can't recall off the top of my head because I don't use it, I don't use any of them. So.
Absolutely.
But.
It shouldn't be accepted.
It's all.
I personally don't think, and I know this may be an outreach, but a lot of our students listen to music that have that kind of stuff in it too. And that shouldn't be allowed in our buildings.
So just to make sure I'm on the same page, so we're looking for specificity with specific words and then the actions. I mean, I think the actions are listed here. What I heard from the students and from the community is there are at least a number of students that feel that these words are being used, sometimes directed at them, if not at them in the community, and it's somewhat culturally accepted. And that there is also, again, I don't want to speak for the people that were here, but I got the impression that there wasn't a comfort level with them in reporting that to someone in the building that they would feel would deal with it. That's what I heard. I don't know if that's accurate, but that's what I heard. That's what we need to fix. And I think if changing the code of conduct with specificity to specific words is helpful, I'm not opposed to that. If one child is a victim of any kind of racial bias or abuse or hate speech, regardless of what it is, that's too many. And, you know, one of the things is our obligation and my obligation as a school administrator is to ensure a safe environment for all of our children. And if it happens to one kid, it's too many. So whatever we need to do, we'll do that. I think this is, as some of the speakers said, this isn't a one and done where we're going to fix this problem. But it's also not something I want to wait five years to take care of, right? There's things we could do right away. And if changing the code of conduct with more specificity will help, we will gladly do that.
Can I ask a question?
Go ahead, Dr. Getchery.
Yeah, I just want to echo what everyone else has said. Superintendent Breagan, where is it? You mentioned that there's language in the code. Are you looking at item 22 verbal abuse? Or where do you feel like hate speech is being addressed already adequately with the code of conduct?
You put me on the spot to pull it up right away, but there is stuff listed specifically for hate speech. And then the verbal abuse is number 22. You know, where we talk about any kind of characteristics related to race, color, religion, gender, national origin, disability, inflexibility, sexual orientation, other characteristics. That's a place we could have more specificity without a doubt. Then there's something lower about written materials after that too, which is very specific to racially divisive materials, Ku Klux Klan, Aryan Nation, white supremacy, neo-Nazi Proud Boys, any hate group or flags representing them and the Confederate flag.
Okay. I do see those two things. What I would say is that the definition of what we have for verbal abuse does not adequately address the hate speech. Because it, or it's not, is not broad enough or not defined. So I would agree with other board members that, because I think if you ask, what is hate speech? Would our students or staff be able to identify? I think we do a better job. I've seen presentations on bullying, like what constitutes bullying? And there's very clear guidance that we provide. But when it comes to hate speech, do we have that as well? And I don't think that 22 and 24 written material on verbal abuse sufficiently address hate speech. So I think that there's, there's an opportunity here to begin to address some of these issues. And I agree with Chair Hudson that this is obviously just the beginning, but we just had a presentation, received materials from the dialogue on race with some very good suggestions. And I don't know if just adding a little bit of language to verbal abuse is sufficient, but certainly I think that there needs to be some clarity here.
So I think this list is in alphabetical order except for 13, which is out of alphabetical order. And hate speech is not there. Hate speech should be called out on its own in that list.
I don't disagree. We could add that, a specific session on hate speech. And I think the importance of this code of conduct is making sure all of our students understand it. I don't think there's a staff member in the county that doesn't know what hate speech is when he sees it or she sees it or hears it, but I understand. speech is when he sees it, or she sees it, or hears it. But I, I understand.
And I don't, I don't know that I agree with that. Because some people, it's a belief.
We can make these changes.
We kind of going back to some of the comments from a public address that they really, they stuck with me, right? Like even just the term hate speech, there are words that are used as hate speech, but some of those same words are used in other contexts that aren't necessarily hate speech, but they shouldn't exist in our schools either, right?
Right, that's right.
So, I mean, I think, again, I think that's why it's, it's a hard problem, right? If this was an easy problem, we would solve it a long time ago, right? And changing a couple of words in code of conduct that, by the way, most students don't actually read, right, ain't gonna solve this problem, right? But we gotta start somewhere. So definitely open to putting a little more intentionality in that area, but it's, it's just the tip of the iceberg.
Well, part of the, what we heard tonight was working and partnering with CI to help educate about history. Because once, the hope is, once folks understand who people really are and the contributions, and how this word came about and why, then there can be change. So I believe the ask over and over and over again was to work with the students who are interning and other students who may want to be involved. And CI has so much information, so much knowledge, and has asked for grants to be able to help share and develop programs to help develop individuals. I think that would be a good start. I think the students being able to feel appreciated and heard to be a part of how do we make this better? How do we make this change? Would be huge.
I totally agree with you. Somebody that wasn't raised or born in this area, the history here is astounding. And I think many were people that are students who grew up here that are not even aware of this significance of the Christian, Christiansburg Industrial Institute and Booker T. Washington's input and all that. I found that astounding as someone who recently moved to the community, and we have not capitalized on those resources. And I look forward to reaching out to the director, Mr. Sanchez, and trying to have that conversation. I actually asked Ms. Wood Sessler to get his contact information with me, to me before he left today, so I could reach out and do that. We should definitely do that. And I think it's a resource that we are not utilizing for our own benefit.
And so in our last meeting also, we talked about writing specific policy on these hate speech items. And as I said, I've been reading about them in other districts. One of the things that many districts have is when hate speech is directed at somebody, it's a different level of discipline than when words are just used in the, the school system. So I, we can look, we can look at more policies. I would like to have a policy brought before us to, to put into, to place here at MCPS. I don't know if the rest of the board is in agreement with that. But I think we need to have it actual, actual policy, what those, what those items are that aren't tolerated.
I agree.
But also, if I heard right, I did hear a speaker say that using that word, even in a non-hate speech term, it makes people feel like it's okay because it's the norm. And I personally think that's where it becomes, it, to, yes. And so that's why I'm a per, none of it, even it, not, I hear what you're saying, but I think it, but it, like Penny said, the lines become blurred if they're allowed to hate in fun, use those terms. And we shouldn't allow that either. It shouldn't be allowed at all.
That's what I.
Yeah.
That's what I said. The, the difference in what I said was if it's directed at somebody as a hate, as hate speech, then maybe it's a three-day suspension. If it's somebody using a profane word, it's a one-day suspension. There's different levels, whether it's directed at somebody or not directed at somebody.
See, I think it all needs to be linked in the same.
Yeah. If, if, even if it's not directed at me, if I hear the N-word, it still affects me almost the same way. It's just not in my face, but it's there.
And I agree with Ms. Franklin. That word is just, no matter what context it's used in, whether it's hate speech or for fun, per se, or jokingly, shouldn't be said. What baffles me is that the kids who, who see it that way, totally confusing me because they think it's okay when they're listening to it in music, and they hear it in music, and they all listen to it. They all do. All of them do. I can assure you of that. And they think that's okay. But, you know, we're not gonna do that. I'm like, so why is it okay for you to listen to it there and you think it's okay, but we're not gonna use it there for that way? I, I don't know. I, I don't think we can, I, I don't know if we can control what, what music they listen to. But at the same time, it's a total, you know, it's, you know, it's okay to, to listen to it, but it's not okay to say it. But you're okay listening to it in, in a, in a song, or in a rap, or in a, whatever you're listening to it, however you're listening to it. So, you know, I, I don't know what we can do at that point, as far as, you know, it's okay, it's okay to, we, we listen to it in a song, and we hear it, and we're okay with it that way, but we're not okay with it when we hear it coming out. That part is really kind of confusing to me a little bit.
And I don't know that students who may listen to that may think it's okay, but that's who they're listening to, and it's there. But that doesn't necessarily mean that they're accepting of it. I had a conversation with students at Christiansburg High School around the N-word a few years ago. And even the students who weren't calling out their friends for using it in conversations, or would sometimes use it themselves, when it came to asking them, what did your parents think of it? What would your grandparents think of it?
Right.
It was a whole different conversation.
Right.
And they understood we shouldn't be using that. If they heard me using that, it would be a different consequence for it. So, but it's a matter of enforcing it in our buildings. And no matter what they listen to, no matter what they watch in our buildings, we're gonna educate our students as to why you shouldn't and what happens if you do.
And I'm gonna go a step further, because I think parents need to be at the forefront of enforcing that and talking to their kids about that.
Wonderful in a perfect world, but those students learn that from somewhere, and they learn it very early. I will never forget my five-year-old coming home after a couple of days of kindergarten and asking me what that word meant, because she didn't hear that.
Right.
So they come to school learning it because it's taught. So relying on the parents to be able to correct their children when they have taught them this, I don't think will work. But what we can control is what's in our buildings. And maybe educate to give folks a different perspective as to the impact of these words.
And kind of making the parents aware what the consequences are, and so they can be more aware of letting their child know, can't do that.
Did y'all hear me?
No.
Okay. So helping the parents understand what the consequences are, and I can't remember everything that I said, but that doesn't work because they taught it to them. So it comes down to, don't get caught, or it doesn't matter. We'll deal with the consequences because this is what we believe. So it may be a hard lesson for some folks, but it needs to stop. And that starts with the adults in the building, understanding what their role is in this, and holding them accountable, because that's not happening.
Just to summarize, what I think the school board is directing us to do is to come up with a section in the code of conduct specifically dedicated to hate speech, and delineate what that is, what it looks like, and what the consequences for it would be, and maybe reference some of the things, Dr. Roundtree, that you shared from other policies, and how it's dealt with differently when it's directed directly at someone or not. Is that, did I get that right?
And I think a standalone policy on these levels of hate speech as well.
So do, so do we want a standalone? Because that's separate than the code of conduct.
Can I ask a question?
Yep.
But, Dr. Roundtree, did you see, in the, in the other code of conduct that you looked, looked at for other division, and I appreciate the fact that you did that research, how common was it to have a standalone policy? I, I would be in favor of that as well. Was that, it was a common to do that?
I was specifically looking for policies on hate speech and profane speech in schools. So it was all policies, because I was specifically looking for those pol, for policies on that.
And was it fairly common? I mean, was it easy to find other school divisions?
Yeah.
That had standalone policies?
Yes.
Okay. I would be in favor of that, because I think that there's some complexity here. I mean, think about the fact that we just developed a standalone cellphone policy. And, and there, there's certainly more complexity with this issue than that. And I would be in favor of pursuing a standalone policy, rather than just a definite, just a definition of, of hate speech.
I think that makes sense. And then we can refer back to it in the code of conduct, like we have other policies. So that allow that policy.
Exactly.
More robust.
So referencing the code of conduct, but a standalone policy on hate speech?
I think so.
I'm good with that.
Some type of partnership with CI and the students who have been working with CI, and also asking questions with administrator, and the administrators in the building, why nothing is being done? Or if it is being done, why is it not being effective? And that goes to accountability. And I'm, I've said this before, we have a Department of Equity and Diversity or Inclusion, and we have two people there. And two people cannot hold the whole district accountable for what's happening in our buildings. So there has to be, there has to be more eyes and ears on the situation, and tools put in place for reporting and the consequences, which we should come up with in the policy. Because if we're gonna do this, we need to do it the right way. And without accountability, we just put more words down.
I totally agree. Accountability is what needed, and it's not just two people's problem. It's the whole division's problem. So we will address it as such.
Okay, great. Board, any, any other comments? Code of Conduct?
I appreciate the conversation.
Sorry, Laura, what?
Sorry. I have a, a question about the code of conduct outside of this important discussion. On page 10 at the bottom, there is an item that's highlighted in red and then crossed out about the substance abuse violation behavior contract. So what, what's the context on?
We, we had some guidance. There are several areas that are highlighted that primarily address things that reference the website. And it was recommended that, you know, we continue to maintain things on the website, just not necessarily mention them directly in the policy. The highlighted areas were kind of a question when it went forward to the attorneys. And the advice was, you know, you can have as much material as you want on your website, but sometimes when you reference it in the policy, those things get dropped off and moved to other locations and follow the responsibility of other offices. So we do still have substance abuse contract for first offenders.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. Is that referenced in the leveled responses at all?
In the code of conduct or in documents shared with administrators?
Um, in the code of conduct. I mean, wouldn't it be part of a discipline process?
It is addressed specifically in the alcohol, tobacco, and other drugs section as a first offender, and probably under the level, or the category of leveled responses. It probably falls within tasks or restrictions assigned by the principal they're designee.
Okay.
We certainly can add it directly, if that would be board preference.
I mean, if the guidance was because things change and move, you changed the name of something, but the name, and, and then you forget to change it in this one document, if that was the, the best practice that you were advised, I think that's fine. I just, one more context.
I understand. You've seen a lot of policies tonight.
You actually had a related question. As I read through it, I wasn't smart enough to actually write down the section where I saw it. But somewhere in there, we, it, the school division website, we refer to the student behavior supports and interventions portion of our website, which doesn't exist, at least not that I could find in that, in that name, right? So I was gonna kind of have that same comment, right? We should probably be, be less inclined to refer to specific things on our website if, um, the website's gonna change independent of.
Yes, sir. Did, do you recall it being struck through, or?
I, I don't.
I will, I will look for that.
Yeah, yeah.
I will look for that and have that before your, your next review.
I wish, I wish I could search in these PDFs that we're getting.
We're going, we're going back and forth between Google Docs and Word.
Yeah.
And that creates.
Yeah, I think you lose some.
Some of the difficulty with, with the documents.
Yeah. Yeah, I wish I'd written down, I copied and pasted the, the language. I wrote down the language.
What was it?
The.
It's mentioned on one, two, three, four.
Student behavior.
It's on page five in section three, struck through in two places, section three and section four.
Yeah, you're right, right.
And that's, and that's what we try to do.
That's what it was.
Is just clear out that specificity, so as things change, we, we don't end up with a mistake in the policy.
Yeah. Very cool. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Well, and not, I don't think I need any information. I just was gonna make a comment, just didn't want to mix it up with the conversation we had earlier. But for me, the drug in the code of conduct, it's been there. It's been there for years. To say we don't have vapes and drugs in our school, we're putting our head in the sand, we better wake up, and we better start saying, parents, there, for me, personally as a board member, there's no tolerance. And, you know, I've said it before, drugs don't care who you are, what color your skin is, how much money you've got. They just seek to destroy. And there's a ton of parents right here in Montgomery County that wished, I'm sure, somebody took a strong stand against drugs for their student in high school. Maybe they would still be here today. So I think along with some of our other things that we want to take a strong action on, this is another one. And to me, we just need to make sure parents understand. There's no rhyme or reason. parents understand, there's no rhyme or reason. We've got to get control of what drugs are out there, or we're not going to be able to.
Yeah, thanks, everybody. A lot of good conversations there. You know, the, the Code of Conduct is really the culmination of all the things that we're trying to, like, impress upon our students, right? And it's, you know, again, it's, it carries a lot of weight to it. I don't know if, I mean, students actually pay attention to it, right? But, you know, there's a lot of stuff in there that we wanted to champions, but yeah, there's a lot of initiatives we need to continue to, to push on. Alrighty. Next up, Dr. Amanda Widener, our Director of Human Resources, will present the MCPS staffing update with a new and improved form tonight.
Chair Hudson, board members, and Dr. Bragan, it's an important time of the year to give all of you an update on our, our staffing statuses, including our vacancies and our filled positions. As Mr. Hudson referenced, I do have a slightly new format, so I've tried to give you more of an overview and condense some of the information, but also to include some other forms of data that I hope will be helpful to you. So I welcome your feedback on to whether or not this, this is the type of information you'd like to see in future updates. Just to start off, school begins for our students two weeks from today, and so it's important to look at our vacancies. I've broken it down by category. So in the area of our administrators, we still have eight vacancies that we are working on filling. We have begun the hiring process for all those positions. This number is slightly higher than it was at this time last year. At this time last year, we had four administrator vacancies. However, as you are aware, we did add two new positions to our administrator positions that we are seeking to fill. And these vacancies include two directors, five supervisors, and a coordinator. Elementary certified, we're, we're doing really well here. We have two vacancies. And this is much better than where we were last year. At this time last year, we had seven elementary vacancies. So right now, we have an open elementary classroom teaching position and a reading specialist position, which we are working to fill. The secondary level, which includes middle school and high school positions, we currently have four vacancies. Again, that's an improvement to where we were this time last year. At this time last year, we had eight vacancies. So again, we're looking to fill two elective teachers, a reading specialist, and an IT RT data coach there. Special education certified positions, special education continues to be a critical shortage area, again, for our school division and school divisions across the state and the nation. So we're about where we were at this time last year. We had seven vacancies at this time last year. Right now, we have eight. However, the vacancies right now are in different places than they were last year. Last year, we had six vacant special education teaching positions. Right now, we have two. The majority of our special education vacancies are in the area of speech-language pathologists, where we do currently have four vacancies, and we also have two school psychologists openings that we're trying to fill. And then for our classified staff, which includes much of our support staff, we currently have 52 vacancies. Again, this is better than where we were last year. At this time last year, we had 67 vacancies. And those vacancies that we have right now, I don't have these itemized for you, but includes 14 custodial positions. Our biggest area we're trying to fill right now, which we're making a lot of progress on, is for our paris. We've got about 20 open positions there. We have filled many. However, we did add many new parap positions for the upcoming school year. So we, we are working hard, and we'll continue to work hard over the next two weeks to hopefully fill as many of those positions as we can. All right, let's look at the positions that we have filled. So this is a breakdown of all the positions we filled, or where we have positions that have recommended candidates, and some of those candidates will be coming forward tonight on the personnel report. So again, we have filled eight administrator positions. And again, our, at the building levels, we have our principal and AP positions filled. We have three positions tonight with recommendations. Elementary, we have filled 33 positions. And, and this is a good thing, because I will say, the applicant pool this year for elementary classroom teachers is thinner than it was last year. But, but we have managed to fill most of those positions, and we have seven positions with recommended candidates for tonight. Secondary, we have filled 54 positions so far this year. And then again, we have nine and a half positions with recommended candidates. Special education certified, we've actually filled 22 positions already for the upcoming school year, and we have six additional positions where we have recommended candidates. On our classified side, we have filled 40 positions, and we currently have 19 positions with recommended candidates. So there's been a lot of movement this week. In fact, that 19 is probably a little bit higher now, because even as early as late this afternoon, I saw some new recommendations that had been put in. So that's kind of where we are. We've, we've filled a lot of positions this year. And just to give you kind of an overall number in terms of certified employees, we had 122 certified employees who either retired or resigned this year, which is less than we had last year. All right, I want to kind of give you some data that gives you kind of an overview on the process in filling these positions, because first of all, it is a collaborative cooperative effort and a complex effort to fill all these positions. We start by posting jobs, then we involve people in screening and reviewing applications. Interviews are always done through a committee format, so our, our interviews are conducted by an administrator, either a building-level principal or assistant principal, or a supervisor or director, who brings in other staff members to, to interview people. We typically try our best to include at least three candidates for each position that we're interviewing for. But this just kind of gives you a breakdown of the number of interviews that we've conducted since January, when our hiring season began. So on the certified side, we've done 97 sets of interviews, and this was as of last week. There's probably some additional ones I would need to put in for that have taken place this week, and that included 987 candidates. On the classified side, we've done 98 sets of interviews since January, and that includes 283 candidates interviewed. We also participate in a number of recruitment events, including our own MCPS Educator Recruitment Day, which took place earlier this year in February, where we had 124 candidates attend, and all of them were interviewed. And on that particular day, we issued 11 letters of intent to teachers. So once that process takes place and a candidate is put forward after the, after interviews, and then goes through the approval process and references are checked, there's also a final interview with Dr. Bragan. As I, I think you know, Dr. Bragan interviews all of our certified candidates and most of our, our classified candidates. So it's a fairly extensive process. And we are going to be participating in a recruitment event this upcoming weekend. As you probably know, stepping out is taking place this weekend in Blacksburg, Friday and Saturday. Stepping out is always a great opportunity for us. We have a booth there. We'll, we'll be doing advertising, and it's an opportunity for us to meet people in the community. And so I'm hoping that we may meet some individuals who might be interested in some of our open classified positions. The other piece of data I wanted to put in front of you tonight has to do with our diversity hiring. One of the goals of our strategic plan is to continue to diversify our employee population. So I kind of wanted to give you a look at numbers. I looked at numbers from last year, as well as numbers of this year, and this is for new hires. So if we look at our new hires last year, we hired 125 new certified employees. Eight of those individuals are minorities. So that represents about 6.4% of that population. Among our classified new hires last year, we hired 164 new employees, 22 of them are minorities, which is about 13.4%. If we look at our data for this year, and I will point out that this doesn't include all of our new hires, because this is data based on what is currently in Munis, our employee database system, and not all of our new hires have been fully processed there. But just looking at those numbers, the 77 new certified hires in Munis, nine of them are minorities. And so that's about 11.7%. So we're, we're trending in, in a positive direction there. And the same is true for classified. Our new hires that are currently entered into Munis, we have 30, and five of them are minorities, which is 16.7%. Currently in Munis, if we look at all of our certified and classified employees identified as minority employees, it's 7.1%. So again, I think it's encouraging that when we look at our new hires for this year, we are at least trending in a positive direction. And I can continue to update that information, because as I said, when you look at those numbers, they don't match up with the numbers on the previous screen, because not all of our new hires, and certainly those that are recommended, are, are reflected in our Munis reports, but they would be by next month. So that's all the information I have, so I'm happy to answer any questions.
So what's meant by sets of interviews?
So when we do interviews, like if we're interviewing for a position, a, a set of interview might include as few as three candidates, or as many, we've had interviews where we've interviewed as many as nine.
All at the same time?
Well, with, usually within the same day. So we would, we would set aside a block of time to do a set of interviews.
But you're still doing individual interviews?
Yes, all interviews, yeah. For each candidate, they get an individual interview. But if we're interviewing for a position, let's say we have an elementary classroom teaching position, we're going to try and interview at least three candidates. So in that, that, that day of interviews, there, there could be three candidates interviewed, or possibly more.
Okay, just not clear what's going on with that. And when we talk about our diversity hiring, thank you for including that, but the information as far as how many may have left, and we are just backfilling positions, that would also be helpful to understand what's going on, because I've been asking for some information I haven't gotten.
I can, on the next update, I can, I can include retention information for you.
Board, any other questions?
I have a couple of questions.
Go ahead.
Thank you so much. I appreciate the Morgan validated report. Two questions. The first one is on special education certified. The, I'm looking at the total positions filled for 24, 25. It says there's 22 positions filled. How many positions, including the new positions that were created with the budget, are not filled? What's the gap there?
So currently, among special education certified positions, we, we have eight vacancies. And those include two special education teacher positions unfilled, two school psychologists, and four speech-language pathologist positions. Those are our unfilled positions in special education certified.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that. I, I too, not just, would appreciate some retention data, not just on diversity personnel, but in general. But the, the question I have is, is it common for the superintendent to interview all candidates for certified and most for classified positions? Is that, I mean, I'm looking at this, and that's, that's a lot of interviewing. Is, does that create any bottlenecks? Because I, I have heard from a couple of individuals about who, who interviewed, and it took some time before they were actually hired. Is it, is it common for, and Dr. Bragan, you could speak to this as well, to interview all candidates for certified, most classified positions? Does that create any bottlenecks in our, our hiring? Let me get this volume.
I can speak to that, if it's okay, Dr. Widener. I don't know how common it is, Dr. Gettrich, but I know in the two previous superintendents I did, I did that, and I did it for the sole reason, and the one division had about 17,000 students and 1,600 teachers, 2,500 entire staff members, so a little larger than here. And I do it for one reason. The most important thing we do is who we hire, and whether that's a classified staff, certified staff, they are the people who will be in front of our children every day. And I want, I interview them for two reasons. One, I want them to see who the superintendent is, and know that, how valuable I think they are in working with our children, and they're worthy of my time. And two, I want to make sure they meet our expectations for what we expect for our children, and what I would expect for my children, because I wouldn't want to put one of your children in a classroom that I wouldn't want one of my three daughters in. So I take it really personally, because hiring is the most important thing we do. We don't make widgets. We are not accountants. We develop human capital with our most precious resource, our children. And I think as the superintendent, it's my responsibility to do that. As far as the bottleneck, there was some issues with that a while ago, but we've kind of refined that process. There's times where I interview 10 people a day, and I'll come in early, I'll stay late, I'll come in on Fridays, you know, when we're off in the summer. So I don't see that as an issue. I mean, Dr. Widener, you're in HR, I don't know how many times it's bottlenecked, because I couldn't get to someone, because I'm pretty much accommodating everybody's schedule. You could speak to that.
I think we have, over time, we have improved and streamlined that process. There's a lot of communication between the HR office and Dr. Bragan, and, you know, we, we communicate regularly and, you know, kind of indicate urgency with the need to, to set up the interviews. So I, I think we've streamlined the process, so it, it's not bottlenecked anymore.
Okay, great. I'm glad to hear that. Thank you.
Okay, board, any more questions? Okay, great. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, board, that was our last item under our business agenda. So now we'll move to unfinished business. Are there any items of unfinished business?
I was going to bring up the N-word and what we had in place since the last meeting, but I think we've had a discussion around that already.
Thank you. Any items of new business? All right. Are there any announcements?
Yeah, so just, so everyone is aware, Race for Ace is this coming Saturday, August 3rd, in support of our ACE program for two years of free tuition at New River Community College. And I'd also like to thank all of the speakers during public address today. I very much appreciate for everybody coming out. And lastly, since our, we won't have another meeting until after the start of school this year, I'd like to wish all of our students an excellent 2024 school year, and just remind them to be kind to all, to each other.
Kudos.
So again, under public address, when we were talking about our paraprofessionals, after talking with an, one of our paraprofessionals, they made a recommendation or a suggestion that falls right in line with what was said tonight, and that was to actually have our folks who are candidates get the full impact of the position from someone who's doing the position, so that they don't come in and not understand exactly what they're getting into, which helps create more of a turnover. So I mentioned that a while back, but I, I think, again, coming from someone who was actually doing the job, made, made good sense to me.
Board, any, any other announcements?
Yeah, so I have a couple.
Yep, of course.
So I'm going to make this brief, or try to. So I've got to thank you, and then a congratulations, and I am just going to echo how proud I am of the girls' CHS softball team. I've been a part of that family, so that's very near and dear to my heart. My daughter played with a lot of those ladies that were standing up here with you tonight, and their families. And that's just, for that being the first time for them, it felt like a win for me. So I just wanted to say how proud I am of all of them and their hard work, and to Coach Gainer, and Assistant Coach Gainer, and Coach G, and everyone that helped and volunteered to, to make that happen. I'm just super proud of them, and, and all of our athletes who have won state championships as well. It was good to see them and good to have them back. Again, I want to thank, to First Bank and Trust, we value our community help with anything they can help with in their donations. So the $2,500 to the school supplies is huge. So just a big thank you to them again, for everything they do for us and that donation. I did want to share an event that is happening in my community on Saturday as well. It's called Our Future, Our Children of Eastern Montgomery County Community Day. That's for Eastern Montgomery Elementary, Shawsville Middle, and Eastern Montgomery High School. It's from 10 to 1 at Old Town Field, and you don't have to be a student or a family that goes to that school. Everyone is welcome. There's going to be hot dogs provided by the Eastern Montgomery High School Booster Club. There's going to be hot dogs provided by the Eastern Montgomery High School Booster Club, there's going to be water, there's going to be food, there's going to be games, there's going to be, it's just an event to kind of get together and camaraderie and get to know each other and cheer each other on, and hopefully to get a kickstart with the school year. So if you're not busy Saturday at the Race for Ace, which I'm all about as well, head down to Old Town Fields from 10 to 1 and bring your family and have a good time. It's going to be a great, a great event. And last but not least, I want to give a shout out and a big thank you to Governor Yonkin and his Board of Education for all of their work towards restoring excellence in our schools. The governor's executive order on our cell phone helps to address an issue that we have discussed for several years, so I was glad to see that that came out and we were already ahead of the game with that, and look forward to him backing that. And I look forward to continuing to work with this board to improve our schools here in this county for our students, parents, teachers, and all of our staff. And good luck to our teachers, students, and everyone in a couple of weeks for the start of school. It's going to be an awesome year.
Okay, Board, anything else?
The dialogue on Race will be Summer Summit, August 24th at 4 o'clock. You can register online at the new Huckleberry Park, and everyone is welcome. And if you don't register, still come, we'll let you in.
All right, great. Our upcoming school board meetings are in Board Docs there. Our next one is August 20th. As Dr. Roundtree said, they'll be after the start of school. Agenda prep is available for that in Board Docs. Next up, do I have a motion entered into closed session as authorized by Section 2.2-3711 of the Code of Virginia to discuss three personnel matters?
So moved. Second?
Ms. Franklin and Dr. Roundtree, any discussion? House Board, please call the roll.
Ms. Bond? Ms. Franklin? Dr. Thatcher?
Yes.
Ms. Parton?
Yes.
Ms. Purcell?
Yes.
Dr. Roundtree?
Yes.
Yes.
Seven in favor.
Motion carries. We are in closed session.
Good job, Lynn Wood. There was a lot. It was a lot. That was a lot. But it did, it did good.
I said 10:00.
That was after we.
It's hard when we haven't met. I mean, you know, when you haven't met for over a month, you've got a lot to talk about. But we did, we're, well, we, almost 7:20, and then we had over 30 minutes of public address, right?
Yeah, a lot of public address.
Yeah.
It's been the 12 and 1 o'clock AM, ending time.